The April 6, 2011 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. We always make this announcement just in an abundance of caution, no reason to believe that alarms would ever go off, but if in fact they're activated, please leave through the closest exit. Our marshal will then advise you when it's safe to re-enter the building. As I say, this is just a cautionary admonition and there's no reason to expect that this would ever occur. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Pastor Ann Jones, Life Christian Center, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You may bow your heads if you like. We come this morning with Thanksgiving. We're thankful for the many blessings that have been bestowed upon us. We come grateful for your kindness, for goodness, peace, and gentleness to all mankind. We ask for this great council today and all of us, wisdom, knowledge, and understanding for everything that we put our hands and heart to do. Let it be good for all mankind. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for our first item, we're going to recognize the April Citizens of the Month. I've recognized a lot of citizens of the months over the 12 years that I've been the mayor, but today's guests especially deserve the honor for the special service that they provide to our community every single day. I'm finishing my tenure as mayor, and one of the things I miss, I will miss the most, is being able to say thank you to deserving individuals like we have who are joining us. I'd like to ask the devout United States Marshal, Christopher Hoy, to please join us at the podium for this presentation. On January 4, 2010, a group of federal court security officers, deputy United States Marshals, and federal detention enforcement officers put their lives in harm's way to protect the citizens of Las Vegas. Tragically, one officer gave his life and another was injured when a man armed with a shotgun entered the Lloyd D. George United States District Courthouse and began firing. Due to the efforts of the law enforcement personnel at the courthouse, the gunman was unable to harm any civilians or gain access to the courthouse where the public employees were going about their business. Today, it's my honor to name the 11 law enforcement officers involved in the incident of April 2011 as our citizens of the month. We owe each of them a debt of gratitude for saving countless lives that day, not only in the courthouse, but also across the street at the historic Fifth Street School where the gunman was fatally wounded. I'm going to ask each officer to come up and join us at the podium as I call their names, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about what they did that day. First, I'd like to ask the son of a good friend of many of us, who we knew personally for many, many years, Stanley Cooper. I'm asking his son Marty to please join us here with your wife Daniela, and also I believe that Stan's stepbrother is also with us today, Rick Bentley, if you'd be kind enough to come up. I know this young man since he's been a baby, and that's why this is so meaningful to me. When the gunman entered the courthouse, he fatally shot Stan Cooper, a court security officer who previously served as a Metro Police Officer for 26 years. Stan attempted to return fire as other officers raced to his aid, and I know that there is nothing we can do to make up for the sacrifice that Stan made, but I want to extend my thanks to you and members of your family on behalf of all the citizens of Las Vegas. And... Court Security Officer William Sherman was also on post at the front entrance of the courthouse, and he returned fire at the gunman. The gunman retreated, and when he tried to re-enter the building, Officer Sherman prevented him from getting inside. Court Security Officer John Eklund was also at the front entrance of the courthouse and directed a female court employee to safety. He also helped chase the gunman out of the courthouse where Deputy United States Marshal was shot. Officer Eklund helped the wounded marshal to a covered position and rendered first aid until EMTs arrived. Officer Arthur Gennaro Jr. covered the front entrance of the courthouse as the gunman retreated outside. He saw the gunman run across Las Vegas Boulevard and engage in a running gunfight that ended with the gunman fatally wounded in front of the Fifth Street School. Michael Garrity III was patrolling the perimeter of the courthouse when he heard the gunfire. He got two pedestrians to safety and then confronted the gunman and ordered him to drop his weapons. He was fired at by the gunman and returned the fire. Leonard Kaufman was in the second-floor security control room when the shooting started. He covered the front entrance from the second floor and pursued the gunman outside and across the street. Not able to join us today is Robert Riskin, the lead court security officer. Officer Riskin took a female employee near Officer Cooper out of the line of fire and had her hide under a desk. He helped chase the gunman outside and coordinated with first responders to render aid to Officer Cooper and secure the scene. And would someone please receive his plaque? Thank you. Sherry Ship was also in the second-floor security control room when the shooting started. She contacted 9/11 and described the situation to the operator. She was instrumental in directing EMTs and Metro Police on what was happening so that they could respond. Also unable to join us today is Deputy United States Marshal Richard Gardner. He heard the gunshots at his desk in the courthouse and raced down a stairwell to assist. Gardner engaged the gunman and suffered serious injuries to the face and torso after being hit by shotgun pellets. Although wounded, Gardner provided critical information of the gunman's description to another deputy marshal who responded down the same stairwell. Marshal Hoy, if you would be kind enough to take the plaque on his behalf as well. After getting the description information from Gardner, Deputy United States Marshal David Delberti, who's also not here today, pursued the gunman across Las Vegas Boulevard, returning fire and trying to bring an end to this dangerous situation. Federal detention enforcement officer Justin Ford was approaching the courthouse on his way to work when he heard the gunfire. He joined with other officers as he repelled the gunman across the street and away from Let's give them another round of applause. These officers went to work on January 4, 2010, just as hundreds of other law enforcement personnel do every day, but when a dangerous situation presented itself, they took action to protect and serve the public. It's a reminder to all of us of the sacrifices that law enforcement can be called upon to make at any time, and I want, once again, to thank you on behalf of myself and the City Council and Marshal Hoy, if you'd be kind enough to say a few words.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, the City Council, on behalf of the men and women of the United States Marshal Service. Thank you so much for giving us this recognition. It is definitely with a very heavy heart that we've come before you today. As a native of Las Vegas, born and raised here, I've seen the city changed, and unfortunately, sometimes it seems like as soon as things get changed for the better, there seems to be somewhat of a regression. On January 4, 2010, no one anticipated an act occurring at one of our federal courthouses that such an event could take place. What was particularly disturbing about that event, and what was wonderfully heroic about also the same event, was that these officers, these deputies, these court security officers, and in particular, our court security officers are all retired police officers who've put their lives on the line for 25 and some as many as 35 years, and they further extended their service to provide safety to our courthouses. When you come to the federal courthouse, no one ever comes there with the intention of a joyous occasion. Usually, they're there to have a situation mitigated that is somewhat distressing and somewhat uncomfortable, and we do our best to try to make people feel somewhat at home to help assuage some of those fears. And when Mr. Weeks entered that courthouse, he was bent on destruction. If he would have to breach that threshold, who'd know how many lives would have been lost? These men put their lives in jeopardy. The responding officers from Metro and as well as from the city Las Vegas Marshals also put their lives in jeopardy to keep you safe. I know some people would think that it is their job just to take the bullet if it's called upon, but it's not just their job to do that. Their job first and foremost is to make you feel secure. Stanley Cooper, anyone who ever knew him would say that is the first thing that he always did. He made folks feel comfortable whenever they came into the courthouse. When he was a police officer with Metro for over 20 years, he was recognized for being a gentleman, a person espousing the highest degree of integrity and citizenship. So it is my honor, it is my great pleasure to be the leader of the United States Marshal Service, and more importantly, to be a lifelong resident of Las Vegas and the city of Nevada, and I count myself blessed and humble to be amongst these great men today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fag and Nathaniel Taylor to join us at the podium. One of the most popular programs that the city runs is the Citizens Academy of Planning. The academy is a free educational program designed to give community members an overview of the planning process and a better understanding of how the city does business. The course creates a public familiarity with the terms and concepts of planning and creates awareness of the zoning process. The 10-week course covers topics including the permit process, historic preservation, the city master plan, the public hearing process, and the Unified Development Code. A total of 16 citizens, including Nathaniel, are graduating from the class today. So as I call your names, would you please stand in the audience so we can recognize you? Father Dave Castilegio. Alana Hermanson. Patricia Lavenhar. Harry Lee. Thelma Lopez. Marshall LaZan. Sharon Liszmbart. Rudy Lucero. Edgar Patino. Renee Polly. Joni Reiner. Quentin Singleton. Michelle Thaxton. Nancy Weiss. And Nathaniel, who is next to me, Nathaniel Taylor. We offer our congratulations to these citizens who dedicated their time to learn more about the planning process. At this time, the class has elected Nathaniel to be its spokesperson and to share a few comments about what they've learned. Nathaniel?
Thank you. On behalf of Mayor and Council of the inaugural Citizens Planning Academy class, we want to first thank you, Mayor and Council, for passing the ordinance that allowed this class to take place. Oftentimes, you talk about the importance and the hard work that city employees put into their jobs. We also want to thank Flynn for his hard work and all of his employees in the Planning Department for putting on this class. I can tell you that all of us learned a great deal about the city of Las Vegas and about how the Planning Department works. We learned all the efforts that you've put into making these master plans work, making the permit process work, and trying to be friendly to the customers in the city of Las Vegas, and we're just grateful for this opportunity and we really appreciate all the efforts that you put into this class. Thank you very much.
Okay, for our next item, I'd like to have Mike Bonner, the Chairman of the Board for the Las Vegas Chamber of Commerce, and Aggie Knoblick, President of the Leadership Las Vegas Council, join us as they had at the podium. Leadership Las Vegas has become a mainstay for aspiring community leaders since inception in 1986. More than 1,000 community leaders have graduated from the program sponsored by the Las Vegas Chamber of Commerce. The exclusive 10-month program accepts 48 participants annually and covers the history of Las Vegas, gaming and tourism, business outlook, government, education, and other topics. I want to thank the Chamber for instituting this program and creating a network of people who understand and care about the community that is Las Vegas. I'm very happy to present this proclamation declaring Wednesday, April 6, 2011, Leadership Day, Leadership Las Vegas Day in the city of Las Vegas, and ask all of our citizens to celebrate the launch of the 25th anniversary celebration. Congratulations on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, this is our 100th year as a chamber in the city of Las Vegas, and probably one of the most successful programs we have is the Leadership Las Vegas program, which celebrates its 25th year this year. As the mayor described, this is an important program. It helps build the leaders of our city. It helps bring an understanding, and we want to encourage any of you out there that are interested in applying for the Leadership Las Vegas program to please apply. Let me just hand the microphone quickly over to Aggie, who runs it this year. Aggie?
Runs it with a lot of help. Thank you very much, Mayor, for this. This is an honor to be recognized, and it's an honor to be associated with such a fantastic program. As I look out in the audience, there's a lot of graduates here today, and we see them rise to the top, and I would just encourage you to be a part of the program and get online and apply. Thank you very much.
For our next item, Councilman Anthony is going to recognize a charitable organization that helps a lot of people in Las Vegas.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. How you doing? Good. It's my great pleasure today to recognize an organization that is doing truly remarkable things for the children and families in our community. That organization is the Grant a Gift Autism Foundation, and at this point, I'd like to have Linda Tache, who is the founder and executive director, and Diane Weeks, a founding board member. If you could come up here, please. Two good friends of mine. The motto of the Grant a Gift Autism Foundation is "Everyone deserves the opportunity to reach their full potential." The Grant a Gift Foundation is a nonprofit organization helping children on the autism spectrum and their families fight autism through diagnostic, support services, and community outreach connections. The Grant a Gift Foundation provides direct scholarships, funding partnership projects with local service providers, and other gifts of support. Their goal is to assist in enhancing each child's development while supporting the family and promoting a lifetime of inclusion in the community in hopes of improving each family's quality of life. The Grant a Gift Foundation connects families to local licensed and certified healthcare providers and therapists, experienced advocates, other nonprofit organizations, and governmental agencies to support autism. The Grant a Gift Foundation strives to fill in the service and funding gaps to give our children growing up in the city of Las Vegas a better quality of life and a future. To date, the Grant a Gift Autism Foundation has helped families receive diagnostic medical support, has ongoing autism sibling support group, has adopted the CCSD autism classrooms, and has held an Autism Family Day. The Grant a Gift Foundation has directly served over 800 individuals and families personally affected by autism in Nevada. Therefore, for all, everything that the Grant a Gift Foundation has done for children and families of the city of Las Vegas, we, the mayor and the entire City Council proudly proclaim today, April 6, 2011, as a Grant a Gift Autism Foundation Day in the city of Las Vegas, and I have a proclamation for you. Do you want to take this?
First of all, on behalf of our organization and Board of Directors, we'd like to thank Councilman Anthony, the City Council, and Mayor Goodman for all your support. You know, I'm a parent as well. I have been able to work up north the past three sessions on different autism bills. I serve on the Autism Coalition in Nevada currently, and I also co-chair for the Subcommittee of Nevada Early Intervention Services for the Nevada Commission on Autism Spectrum Disorders. So the reason I mention that is through all of these experiences, I've got to see a pretty clear picture of the epidemic that we face in Nevada. We have approximately 6,000 families that are affected. Currently, less than 6% with cutbacks are going to be served through the state. The tragedy about that is 90% of those kiddos that grow up without supports and treatment will be wards of the state or dependent on family members. So our goal, Grant a Gift, is to partner with other autism-related organizations, state agencies, and providers to help fill in those gaps. And like Councilman Stavros was saying, is that we also partner with the Clark County School District. There's over 250 autism-specific classrooms that are struggling to give the children what they need. So we partnered with them. We had local businesses adopt these classrooms, and we raised over 17,000 items last year and several thousand dollars for the district. So we're just here to be a piece of the puzzle for the community. It's National Autism Awareness Month, so we're so excited to be here, and thank you guys, you know, for all your support. Together, we can really, as a village, raise these children to hopefully work for the city someday and the state. So again, thank you for all your support. You can visit us at grantagiftautismfoundation.org to see different events and programs that we offer. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful day.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, for our next item, Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian is going to talk about the importance of organ donation. Councilwoman.
Thank you very much. Be elected, yes. You know, the mayor mentioned earlier that he is leaving, and he mentioned one of the things he's going to miss the most is the ceremonial part of our agenda, and I want to tell you, I totally agree with him, and I feel the rest of our council does also. It's a time that we leap with pride to seize the moment to thank all of the residents of our community who do so much to make us who we are. And you know, with sacrifices, the deepest sacrifice made by Stan Cooper, we are honored to have his son Marty here today and his daughter-in-law Daniela, and I want to say we feel honored to have you here today, and we most appreciate that. And it's like threads in a tapestry because we have all these different threads that come through, these different organizations that you've heard today and other days that we've honored, and you know, it makes me feel a great pride in Las Vegas because our tapestry is colorful, our tapestry is strong, and we are proud to be Las Vegans. I had to take that moment to just say a few extra words, but I wanted to say that today we're going to recognize April as National Donate Life Month. National Donate Life Month was instituted by Donate Life America and its members in 2003. It grew out of the federally proclaimed National Organ Eye and Tissue Donation Awareness Week. It features now an entire month of local, regional, and national activities to help encourage Americans to become donors. Locally, we have an amazing organization that has been servicing southern Nevada since 1987. It's called the Nevada Donor Network. It is a federally designated, not-for-profit, organ, tissue, and eye procurement organization, and they are responsible for the coordination, recovery, and distribution of donated human organs and tissues for transplantation and medical research throughout the Las Vegas area. It is one of the few organ procurement agencies in the country to manage the recovery of organs, tissues, and eyes in the same facility, making Nevada extremely progressive in the field of organ and tissue procurement. And I must say, I was not aware of this group. I know the importance of making donations and being a donor, and I know that some of us may not realize, even as we get older, sometimes our body after we're gone can be of great worth to others, and particularly if you have one of those complicated diseases that we're hard to pin down and be able to make the progress we need in fighting it. And so I had looked at UCLA and thought there would be the place to make the donation, and here I find out, right here in Nevada, we have a place nearby that we could go to that has been doing this for so long, and they do it, you know, in a way that's under the cover of the limelight, but takes an awful lot of work and a lot of patience, and I'd like to bring up today the Executive Director, Ken Richardson. And Ken, would you say a few words, please?
Madam Councilwoman, Councilmembers and Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to increase the awareness about the need for organ and tissue donation throughout our community. The national waiting list contains 113,000 names. 300 of those names are Nevadans. Every day, 18 people die waiting for an organ that never comes. Every 12 minutes, a new name is added to that list. During this month of awareness, we ask that all Las Vegans take a moment to talk to your family, to make some end-of-life decisions, those tough decisions that all of us have to make, and consider organ and tissue donation. If you'd like more information, please go to our website, www.nvdonor.org. You can also sign up to the Nevada State Organ and Tissue Donor Registry through that website. Again, thank you for your consideration, and thank you for being a caring council.
And I hand this proclamation to Ken because we, the mayor, and the members of the Las Vegas City Council do hereby take great pride in proclaiming April 2011 as National Donate Life Month.
Thank you very, very much.
Can't take her anywhere. Steal... All right, Councilman Barlow's got to recognize some local artists. Here we go, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Okay, good deal. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. This morning, I am excited to recognize a very special project that highlights some positive efforts by our youth in our fight against crime on graffiti. Graffiti vandalism has been recognized at the most, has been recognized as the most costly property crime in the city of Las Vegas and southern Nevada. Approximately $30 million in public and private funds are expended annually to address graffiti vandalism in the greater Las Vegas area. The city of Las Vegas has partnered with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department and the Southern Nevada Graffiti Coalition to fight graffiti vandalism in Las Vegas neighborhoods. Several new programs have been implemented to fight graffiti vandalism in Las Vegas. These programs include anti-graffiti education to Las Vegas youth. This education is provided as part of a partnership between the city of Las Vegas, Clark County, Metro's Graffiti Investigations and Youth Education Section, and the Clark County School District. Las Vegas is the first city in the United States to implement graffiti prevention education to children as part of the DARE program. The Southern Nevada Graffiti Coalition, along with the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, the RTC, the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, DARE, Graffiti Investigation Section, and Vector Media Las Vegas were proud to host the Fourth Annual Anti-Graffiti Art Contest this year. This contest was implemented to address the need for an educational component to our community's comprehensive plan to reduce and manage graffiti vandalism. The theme for the artwork is to fight graffiti and win, W-I-N, which is "We Inspire Neighborhoods." The contest was open to all 5th grade students who participated in the Clark County School District DARE program, and is designed to help teach students the difference between art and graffiti. The difference between art and graffiti is permission. All of the artwork created to, was encouraged, all of the artwork created was to encourage the community to respect each other's property and not to damage it with graffiti. The top two winning artwork was unveiled at an art awards ceremony, which was held this past February. The winning art is currently being displayed right outside of the council chambers at the ATM on Las Vegas Boulevard, so as you all leave, please go out and visit the bus of the artwork that was chosen. Today, at this time, I would like to introduce Detective Scott Black, who is the director of the Southern Nevada Graffiti Coalition, and Sergeant Mark Sharp. Please come forward and join me at the podium. And they're part of the Youth Education Section for the Metropolitan Police Department. We'll be glad to hear from you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for the ongoing support that we've had in our fight with graffiti vandalism. I'd also like to especially thank Councilwoman Tarkanian for attending our unveiling ceremony last month. We came up with this program in 2007 because we felt the need to address an educational component to our fight against graffiti. We were investigating graffiti vandals, we were identifying them, and we were arresting them. They were going in the court system, but we wanted to try to do something to maybe prevent it from happening. So, what we did is we decided to use our DARE program to start teaching anti-graffiti education. And thanks to Sergeant Sharp and his officers in our Youth Education Section, it's been very, very successful. I'd like to acknowledge here today my captain, Captain Vince Canito, and Lieutenant Jack Owen, and our crime prevention specialist at our gang unit here, Deb Reyes, and their support in this program, and programs like it are very important for us to get these things done. I'd like to acknowledge some folks now, and as I call you up, if you could step forward and be recognized. First off, obviously, we have Sergeant Sharp here, who is the supervisor of our Youth Education Section. He supervises our DARE officers. I'd like to call up Officer John Libbert from Metro's DARE Youth Education Section. Officer Libbert, thank you very much. Officer Janet Beck, Metro Youth Education Section. Officer Gerard Cahoon, Metro Youth Education Section. I'd like to call up... Next, I'd like to call up a good friend of mine and someone who has helped me get a lot of this stuff done. He is my sergeant, Sergeant Anthony Longo from Metro Gang Crime Bureau. And next, I'd like to call up my partner, Detective John DeShutter. An important aspect of this program is the bus, the anti-art contest. It's a pretty big deal, and it costs a lot of money, and there's some people and some organizations, if it were not for them, we would not be able to do it. Obviously, it's why I'm talking about the Regional Transportation Commission, and also Vector Media, who does the graphics. It's a very expensive program, and if it were not for their generosity, we wouldn't be able to do it every year. So, I'd like to call up and acknowledge general manager of RTC, Mr. Jacob Snow. Also from RTC, the Director of Media and Government Affairs, Tracy Bauer. Come down here, Tracy. Is there another one for Tracy, or was it sorry? And finally, I'd like to introduce Heidi Gonzalez from Vector Media, their sales manager, and these are the folks that get all our graphics on the bus for us. And one last thing I'd like to do is I would like to acknowledge someone here at the city of Las Vegas who's become a very good friend to me. She's been a member of our graffiti coalition for several years, somebody who, when I need something from the city, we want to get something done, like programs like this, I call her. So, I'd like to give special acknowledgement to a great partner and a good friend, Lisa Campbell from the Neighborhood Services Department. Now, I'll turn it over to Sergeant Sharp.
Before we do that, we have a presentation for you as well, Scott, so congratulations.
Okay, the education portion of the graffiti prevention is important. About four years ago, we added a supplemental lesson to our DARE curriculum. We're currently teaching DARE in 525 5th grade classes in 134 schools here in Las Vegas. The curriculum utilizes a lesson plan that was created in assistance with the Southern Nevada Graffiti Coalition. We talk about the ordinances and the laws, the fact that graffiti is a crime. We go over the punishments if you're caught doing graffiti. We also get into graffiti cleanup and ways that students can report graffiti violations. After that, we get into the anti-graffiti poster contest, which is what brings us here today. At this time, I'd like to call up our first-place winner, who's from John Dooley Elementary Also from John Dooley Elementary School is Principal Ms. Donadio, and the teacher, Ms. West, along with Henderson Police Department Officer Brightwell. Our second-place winner comes from Ruby Thomas Elementary School, Furman Perez. Also from Ruby Thomas Elementary School is Principal Mr. Cabala. Teacher Ms. Dangle. And then, the DARE officer assigned to Ruby Thomas is Officer Janet Beck. Mr. Barlow?
Let's give them one more round of applause. And thank you, officers, so very much. This is a very great program for the, for the young people in the schools and for the community as a whole, so I just want to congratulate you all once again for a job well done in helping to keep what I call etch and sketch off of our public buildings and private properties. Thank you all so very much. Mayor?
Okay, our final item is going to be presented by Councilman Ross, recognizing National Tartan Day. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a great day in Las Vegas. What a bunch of great people we have here in our community. For those men not wearing a kilt today, there's a nice breeze in this room. It is my honor today to recognize National Tartan Day. Today's date was chosen to commemorate the signing of the Declaration of Arbroath on April 6, 1320. Our own Declaration of Independence was based on this document. Americans of Scottish descent have played a vibrant and influential role in the development of the United States. National Tartan Day was first officially observed in 1997 by the passage of United States Senate Resolution 155. Today, over 11 million Americans claim Scottish and Scotch-Irish roots, making them the eighth-largest ethnic group in the United States. I would like to take this opportunity to honor the many invaluable contributions and accomplishments and cultural traditions of the members of the Celtic community in Las Vegas. In our audience today, we have several of those, and if you'd stand up when I call your name, the St. Andrews Society of Southern Nevada, who's here representing St. Andrews today? Stand up if you would. Give them a round of applause. And the Las Vegas Celtic Society, fellas right there in the back, and you guys are coming up here. And of course, the mayor indulged me, the Desert Sky Pipe and Drum had another engagement, so I appreciate your patience, Mayor, in allowing them to play for you. I think it's only appropriate that every morning start out with bagpipes. At this time, I would like C.T. Seidel from the St. Andrews Society and his great-grandson, Javarius McClair, to come down to the podium with me. Also, Woody Gordon and Brian Towers from the Las Vegas Celtic Society, come on down Look at this. Are you Javarius?
How are you?
How are you?
Four.
How old are you?
Four.
You look really good. Do you like wearing that kilt? Me too. Real men wear kilts. Look at that. I would like to present all three of these organizations with a proclamation today in recognition of National Tartan Day and ask that the entire community of Las Vegas join me in recognizing April 6 as National Tartan Day in the city of Las Vegas. C.T., you want to say a few words before I hand the microphone over to Woody?
I just want to say thank you to the city council, Mayor Goodman, and yourself for bringing this on, and I would like to congratulate Lee Masterson over there, our new president for the St. Andrews Society.
There's a little bit of Scotch in all of us.
Well, there's a little bit of... There's a little bit of gin in some of us.
I couldn't pass that up. Woody, come on up here and watch me talk about what the Celtic Society does and what great event that's coming up right around the corner I want everybody to attend.
Good morning. I'm Woody Gordon. I'm the secretary with the Las Vegas Celtic Society, and it is our organization that brings the annual Celtic Gathering and Highland Games to Floyd Lam Park, and I'm extending an invitation to each and every one of you. I have all of your faces memorized. I will know where you live by the end of the day, and we expect to see all of you up at Floyd Lam. It is a great event, and we're really thrilled this year. We have really added more Celtic flavor. We have an Irish fesh, which is a dance competition, Irish dancing, and we're expecting 350 to 400 contestants to compete from around the country. So, this is a really big event for Las Vegas. It truly is. We also have a number of pipe bands. We have great food. We will have Mayor Mac Goodman joining us on the stage, and we, it is truly, truly a fun event. It really is, and I just can't encourage you enough. And I also want to point out for anyone who thinks that we all get paid huge amounts of money to put this on, how much do you add to that? We do this on a pure volunteer basis, folks. That's how this happens every year, and everyone that works in that park is a volunteer. And we do it because we're very proud of our Celtic heritage. I, for one, am extremely proud of my Scottish heritage, and we all share that in common, and that's why we all do this. Anyway, thank you, and thank, I thank the council, I thank the mayor. Steve, get a bow tie next time, huh? If you're gonna dress up, do it. Now, that event is gonna take place starting the evening of Friday, April 15, with a keighley. For those of you that are uninformed, that's a party, and it will be at Fremont Street, followed by the games on Saturday and Sunday, the 16th and 17th. Gates open at 9:00. Okay? And there will be a bigger keighley on Saturday night at Fremont Street. We also understand that Fremont Street is going to treat us possibly to our very own canopy show dedicated to the games, so we're kind of thrilled about that, too. But come on out and see us. We're fun people to party with. We really are. Thank you so much.
We have some pipe bands down on Fremont Street Friday, Saturday night, because that's, that's a great treat if you haven't seen that yet or experienced that yet. Those pipe and drum bands on Fremont Street, under the canopy, it's an amazing, amazing event. I want to see everybody out at Tulley Springs for the Celtic Highland Games. 9 o'clock, the gates open. It's the 16th and 17th of April. It's gonna be a lot of fun, so thank you guys very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Think we could start? Okay, alright, we're all set. Lois is happy, she's smiling, it's wonderful.
Okay, good morning once again, everybody. We're gonna start with item number 12. Any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in the balance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Your Honor, we have item number 27. We have item 27, approval of Declaration of Intent to Retain Easement for Pedestrian Access Along South Side of McWilliams Drive and West Side of Encanto Drive. Staff has to strike. Item number 64 is a closed session in accordance with NRS 288.220. Staff has to strike that. Are there any other items at this time, councilmembers? Hearing and Your Honor, make motion to bring these two items forward and take the appropriate action, please.
Alright, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 13, approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of March 2nd, 2011. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Yes, Your Honor, no addition or deletion. Make motion to approve the minutes, please.
Okay, let's vote. Did you want to vote? Motion carries. Thank you. Items 14 through 43 are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to bring items 22 and 23 forward just for a separate vote, please.
Okay, that's 22 and 23. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, item 19.
19, anything else? Alright.
Hearing and Your Honor, make motion to approve items 14 through 43, with the exceptions of 19, 22, and 23, please.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 19 is approval to allocate $450,000 of 1% room tax funding with the Public Works Capital Project Fund to fund the downtown core signage program project in Ward 5. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor. As I was speaking to Mr. Arnt earlier during his presentation during the redevelopment portion of the council meeting, I continue to see more and more outside companies receiving city of Las Vegas bids, and I don't know if that, if we can do anything about that, but I do want to just bring it forward as far as trying to identify how in fact we can keep a lot of this business in the city of Las Vegas to city of Las Vegas owned and operated businesses to keep the tax dollars here, to keep our residents employed, and I just wanted to just bring that forward for the record because that, that's something that just sits, that's just very unsettling for me to continue to see these bids go to outside companies. And was wondering if in fact, was this a specialized item that no one here in the city of Las Vegas could handle, or what, if anyone can answer this question for me, what can we do about this?
Mr. Cervantes?
Jorge?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jorge Cervantes, Department of Public Works. Councilman, this item is just the allocation of funding. This isn't a ward of any bid. It's just allocating funding to identify signs that would be put on the freeway to guide folks to downtown, to the performing arts center, to my museum. So this isn't a ward of any contract. It's just a allocation of the funding to move forward.
And I, let me just apologize. I'm speaking on behalf of 22 and 23 as far as my, my, my comments for 22 and 23. But hold on one second, as far as 19 is concerned, being that you're here, have we identified where in fact these signs, what will be on the historical signs? Because I would also like to see the historical Westside School property, being that we're working diligently to bring that up to speed, to make sure that that's a part of the, the sign package as well.
Council, we can certainly include that as part of our analysis. We're looking at putting some signs on both I-15 and US-95 because these stars state roads. We're working with the Department of Transportation as to where they'll permit us to put the signs, but what you're seeing here on the overhead is a sample of the type of signs that we're using. There are the brown and white signs that are used either for recreational or cultural type facilities, and so we'll certainly include that as part of our analysis.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And with that being said, Mayor and Council, no one else has any questions or comments? I would like to move for approval.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask, I know this is a core project for downtown, but are we considering other places too where we'll have those markings? For example, the Springs Preserve and the Mormon Fort and other things like that?
Council, there currently are some of those...
Yeah, that would, that would be included, yeah.
There certainly are signs today for the Springs Preserve after coming southbound 95. It's just past Jones, there's a sign there for the Springs Preserve. I don't remember, there's one on the northbound direction, but we can certainly look at some of that if there's opportunities for those also.
I was just thinking it would coordinate everything throughout the city because we're going to be finding things as we go along, I believe, that will be cultural attributes. You know, I pass that vineyard home all the time, and it just sits there, and you wonder what's happening there. Maybe somebody in staff could let me know what's happening there later. But in any case, I just want to make sure that we are looking at other areas too. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion, Councilman Barlow, on 19, please?
Move for approval.
Alright, let's vote on that, please. Post, please. Motion carries, and on 22 and 23, those were polled, so we could take a vote. On 22 is approval of award of contract number 110159PH, Tax Credit Legal Consultant for Services for the Museum of Organized Crime and Law Enforcement located at 300 Stewart Avenue, the Office of Economic and Urban Development, award recommended to Holland and Knight LLP. It's in Ward 5. May I have a motion on that, please?
I just moved to follow staff's recognition, approve this item, Your Honor.
Okay, let's vote on that, please.
Yes. Staff's recognition.
Motion carries, and 23 is approval of award of contract number 110158-PH, Tax Credit Accounting Consultant for Services for the Museum of Organized Crime and Law Enforcement located at 300 Stewart Avenue, Office of Economic and Urban Development, award recommended to the Resnick Group, and this is in Ward 5. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Make motion to follow staff's recognition, approve this item.
Thanks. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Carter? What item did you want to be heard on?
Number 25.
Alright, item number 25 is approval of award of contract number 110066-CW, Insurance Broker and Consulting Services, Department of Human Resources, award recommended to AON Risk Insurance Services West Inc. And this is $100,000 liability insurance of property damage internal service fund and employee benefit internal service fund. Let's hear from Ms. Rainey, and this is an unusual request because Mr. Carter, on behalf of his company, did not file a formal protest. He has asked however to be heard on this. I told him, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, that I would have preferred to have heard you at citizen's participation, give you as much time as you needed. I hope that it's not gonna be precedential that persons who don't follow the process are given the opportunity to speak, but in your case, we're gonna make an exception. I'm gonna limit your comments, depending on what Ms. Rainey's comments are, to about three minutes. If you need a little more, I'm gonna be liberal, of course, but as I say, I don't want this to be considered a precedent. Ms. Rainey?
Thank you. For the record, Mayor and Council, Kathy Rainey, manager of Purchasing and Contracts. This recommendation of award to AON Risk Insurance is, is for broker services for the city of Las Vegas. The scope of work is for workers' compensation, property management, employee dishonesty, bond coverage. The compensation is, is based on commission. The not to exceed amount is $100,000, and it's a three, three-year contract with two one-year options to renew. Carter Campbell and associate was not selected. Basically, the basis for non-selection is lack of experience with Nevada municipalities. In fact, they only had one municipality with experience in that was the city of San Bernardino. They did not have experience with Nevada presumptive benefits, and they were non-responsive to the RFP in one complete section, so they were disqualified. I have spoken to Mr. Carter, I have debriefed him and provided him an evaluation summary. It was a completely independent evaluation with three members of, on the evaluation team. One was, two members were from the city of Las Vegas, one was an independent evaluator from Clark County Water Reclamation Risk Management, and he, in his letters, in his emails to us, and in his conversations with me, has indicated some issues that we find to be irrelevant. He argues local should be a preference. As you know, there is no local preference, but even had there been one, he is not local. His firm is listed with Secretary of State of Nevada as a Los Angeles firm, and our statistics, we, we understand the mayor and council's preference towards awarding to local. Our statistics show our city of Las Vegas awards have been in 2009, 77% local, 2010, 92% of our dollars have been spent locally, and year-to-date in 2011, we're at 89%. So we understand your direction, and we, in the purchasing office and in the city departments, have worked very diligently to try to spend our dollars here in the local community and in the state of Nevada. Mr. Carter, in his communications to me and to you as council, has tried to discredit the RFP process, insinuating or implying that there is a, a relationship between our risk manager and AON, and implied there's prejudice favoring AON. And as I've indicated, we had an independent evaluation team and tried to discredit AON by indicating that this is a contingent commission, which is not the case. There was some disclosure that AON made to the city based on a case in New York back in 2001 and in 2004, and contingent commissions at this time are not illegal, but that is not the basis of this contract. And so those are the kinds of things that he's been indicating in his letters to me and in his letters that he's copied you on as well. So going back to the, the facts, he did not file a protest, he was not qualified, and he's not a local vendor as he claims. Though he does have a local office, so does AON have a local office.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Carter? I'm gonna put the three-minute timer on. If you go over, I'll use my judgment.
Mayor, fellow city council members, Brad, Elizabeth, Betsy, I should say, and everybody here, I'm Alan Carter, President of Carter Insurance Agency, doing business as Carter Camel Insurance. We have been incorporated since 1962 in the city of Las Vegas and the state of Nevada. This is my staff. I just want to go on a couple things. I loved it, and I thank you for letting me talk because the bagpipes always led us into battle, and this is a battle between Main Street and Wall Street, and that's what we're talking about today. 30%. In 2005, I want to read this to you. This is, this is offensive. I want you to read this because this city was built on the back of entrepreneurs and small business, not Wall Street. A negative rating, 2005, a negative rating was given to Carter Camel and Associates and to Lloyd Cutler based on the small size of their organization and low volume of public entity business. The valiant state that we needed a broker that was the wherewithal or clout to get the underwriters' attention, especially on the city's excess workers' compensation coverage. Now, that's interesting because one thing I did, and why we are Carter Camel, is I merged with Penny Camel from LA. She's a specialist in municipalities. She handles the state of California, she handles LADWP, LAX, city of San Bernardino and LA County, and I thought those were municipalities, but they're telling me it's wrong. And I wanted to bring that up. Plus, I want to go through a lot of other things. In this evaluation, there's a lot of weaknesses and stuff, and the thing that I really get a kick out of is, you know, with, with Japan and Chile and New Zealand, you gotta look at your insurance rates because, because when it comes to property insurance, that could possibly be going up. So when you base something on, on commission, that isn't gonna hold that thing. And think about it, that's $100,000, and this thing was only 58. But, look at this. $175 per hour on loss control. You've got FM Global, the same company, by the way, I handled the city of Las Vegas during the risk management with Ted Wilstead, if you remember him for Metro. You have FM Global, they're the best engineers in the world on property. $175 to $225 an hour for actuary on top of it. We do this for our fee. And also, $200 to $250 in legal. Brad, aren't you an attorney? So these things, I just don't understand. And also, none billed for FY 11? Well, didn't I come up here a year ago and complain about this rubber stamp? So no wonder they're not giving you any billing. So let's go through these strengths and weaknesses, okay? No weaknesses for AON. Duh. Let me see. Sending money out of the state of Nevada into the city of Las Vegas, and it's all getting on presumption disability laws in Nevada. My high right-hand woman is Leslie Seeley, a graduate of Boyd School of Law. We hold meetings in my office with the professors of law. This is an NRS statute, and how do you do it? So one of our weaknesses is lobbying with the state of Nevada because we're local and we're blood here. So some of the weaknesses and the strengths, I want to say, we're blood. Now, our LA office is ran by Jolene Williams. Her mother is Myrna Williams. We got blood in LA. Penny owns two, three homes here. Her husband works for Bank of Nevada, and our account is with Bank of Nevada. And if you look at these pages, this is over 55, 60 years we give our blood to the city on all the charities, organizations we support. Gary, who's walking now, he's a small businessman and a barber. Everybody here, you're not, you don't work, Steve, for a large international, nationwide company. So how do we get an opportunity if we're gonna go into a beauty show because I'm bald-headed, I'm not gonna look as good as a guy with a lot of hair? Those are beauty shows, rubber stamped, I'm sorry. That's how I feel about this bid process. And I could go on and on. I know I'm seeing a red light there, and I'm kinda nervous.
Well, don't be nervous, but...
But also, Leadership Las Vegas, I helped fund that thing. This is a pin that you see with us. So I was glad to see everybody here, and you know what? You want to take a problem with your minority contractors? The city should do a sub-guard program that allows minority contractors to come in without posting a bond, and they could go under that. There's a lot of things we do.
Okay.
I could go on and on. Go on.
Okay.
Sorry.
Don't be sorry. I, I wanted to give you an opportunity to be heard now. As I said, I have to control it because of the precedent.
I know.
But if folks feel that the process has been abused, I would suggest in the future that you file a protest and go through the ordinary channels. I understand that it's a costly proposition, but if you're right, you're right. It's that simple.
It's not fair to small business. I just want to go on record with that.
Alright, thank you.
So this, like I say, this process starting in 2005 was a rubber stamp, and I just want to let you all know that. This is a battle between Main Street and Wall Street, and look at it. How did this city get built? That's why I'm wanting to emphasize.
Well, we thank you very much for coming down. Okay, Ms. Rainey, you could have a seat, and may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor, make motion to follow staff's recognition, approve this item, please.
Let's vote, please.
Your Honor, since we concluded the consent agenda, so we have to...
I polled it.
No, Your Honor. I'll make a motion, we recall item number 25, please.
Alright. You want me, uh, motion, let's vote on that motion, please?
Motion to recall?
Yes.
Let's vote, please? Yes. Let's vote on the motion to recall. Post?
I'm gonna get to vote.
Okay, please vote.
Our screen isn't allowing us to vote, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, now we can vote. All right, now we can vote. Post. All right, motion to recall passes. Yes. And now a motion?
Make a motion to approve the item. Your staff recommendations.
Thank you. Now there's a motion. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I request that sometime in the future, we have a discussion on these types of things that are done as far as RFPs and other things along that line? Because I've had other concerns voiced to me. I always thought we had to have an RFP sent out, for example, and then I was told, no, there are certain types of projects we don't. And so I just wanted to make sure we were all aware of everything. And this type of thing discussed today, too.
Very good. So that would be part of our briefing?
Yes.
Let's wrap. Very good. Item 44 is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Disposition and Development Agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Nevada Health Centers, Inc. for the Construction of a Medical Office Building and Acquisition of 2.42-acre Site in Enterprise Park located at 1888 Stella Lake Street. This is Award 5, and this item is related to Council Item Number 50, which is R14-2011. And apparently, this item is going to be trailed until after Item 50. Is that correct?
We could hear now, or we could trail it.
Well, could I call Item 50 now, too?
If you'd prefer, yes.
All right. Yes, why don't I do that? I'll call Item 50 now, and we'll hear both items Is R14-2011 Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Consent to the Sale of Real Property Described as APN 139-21-313-016 by the City of Las Vegas and Nevada Health Centers, Inc. for the Construction of a Medical Office Building on 2.42-acre Site in Las Vegas Enterprise Park located at 1888 Stella Lake Street in Ward 5. And then this item, of course, is related to Council Item 44. So we'll hear both of those items now. Mr. Arant?
Thank you. For the record, Bill Arant, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This item is for a new project in Las Vegas Enterprise Park, Master Plan Business Park that's being developed by the City of Las Vegas and our office. Nevada Health Centers is a nonprofit that's statewide that provides care for area residents, and they were looking to build a new facility in Las Vegas and chose our Enterprise Park location. They're looking to build an approximate 30,000-square-foot facility. I know our agreement says 25,000, but they've exceeded our minimum threshold. And the site plan for the project is actually on the planning portion of the agenda today under a separate item. The facility is going to house numerous services at the location, including OBGYN services. It's going to be relocating Clark County jobs and also relocating employees from an existing facility on Martin Luther King Boulevard. The total number of jobs that are going to be relocated from other facilities are 73. In addition to that, and perhaps more important, are the creation of new jobs. Eight new full-time employees will be created at the facility, and we're working very close with Nevada Health Centers to hold a job fair for the community and are going to work very closely with Councilman Barlow, the councilman for the ward, as well as the rest of the council, to make sure that residents in the community are aware of those job opportunities, which will... And the job fair is likely to take place in the fall, in September. The transaction's pretty simple. We're selling the property to Nevada Health Centers for a purchase price. The purchase price was negotiated based on fair market value. We did give a discount below fair market value based on what the nonprofit is bringing to the facility. The resolution is part of our requirement to justify when we sell below the higher of two appraisal values, to justify an exemption for either redevelopment or economic development. And we are picking the economic development exemption for the creation of new jobs. The high appraisal was for $600,000, which is roughly $5.70 per square foot, given the size of the site. And we negotiated a sale price of $348,480, or a sale price of $3.30 per square foot, roughly a 40% discount below the high appraisal value. In consideration of what the nonprofit's going to bring, again, they're building a 30,000-square-foot facility. They are creating eight new jobs, and the economic impact well exceeds the discount on the fair market value of the land. The project is already moving through entitlements, as I mentioned. The site plan is on council for today, and they're looking to break ground in the fall and actually have the facility, I'm sorry, break ground in May of this year and actually have the facility completed by the end of the year. The Chief Executive Officer for Nevada Health Centers, Inc., Mr. Thomas Chase, is here with us this morning. If you have any questions of our nonprofit partner, I'd be glad to answer any questions as well.
Very good. Any comments or questions at this time? I could just add, my comment is, Councilman Barlow, you're a lucky fellow because when I went over there for the groundbreaking, we saw the renderings of what this project's going to look like, and they have a beautiful building. It's absolutely a beautiful project, and will add a lot of prestige to Enterprise Park. Okay, I have a motion then on item, I think we should do 50 first and then 44. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so very much. I do have a question as it relates to the construction side, Bill. Was it 80, 81 construction jobs that this development would be bringing forward once it breaks ground? Is it this May, a month from now?
We're looking at 39 construction jobs.
Thirty-nine.
That's based on the size of the project. The actual labor may vary, but we're looking at 39 construction jobs.
And how many permanent jobs?
Eighty-one is the permanent job count, which includes those employees that are relocating. So we're going to focus real heavily, obviously, on the new jobs, the eight new jobs, and that'll be part of the job fair that we look to do in the fall.
Okay. And when will it break ground? Is it May, 30 days from now?
Well, they're under a tight schedule. Some of their money is from the ARA, the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act, so they have a deadline under which they have to spend the money. So in order to meet that deadline, they need to break ground sometime in May. They still have to go through permitting, so we're going to be fast-tracking the project through permitting to make sure they get under construction as quickly as they can.
So with the ARA funding, does it, does the building, must the building be completely built before the monies is released, or has the monies been released?
They, they actually have, I think, as I understand, kind of a holdback requirement that there's a certain amount of money that's retained until the project's completed. Mr. Chase is here, and he's the one that's required to comply with the requirements of the money. The money's not flowing through the city. It's flowing through the state. So if you have a question on the ARA funding, I'd invite Mr. Chase to come up and answer.
Mr. Chase, please come forward. My question is more so just making sure that the money is in place so that we're not selling our asset and not receive an end product and our asset is gone. So I'm looking at as far as the protection of our asset.
Right.
So how are we protecting our asset to make sure that, turnkey, we receive a building at the end of the project?
We have our, in our contract requirement, that they provide the notice of the funding award, so they're doing that. So the funds are in place. We're verifying that. How the funds get drawn down, Mr. Chase can speak to that.
Okay. How are you, Mr. Chase?
I'm fine. Thank you for your question. The grant award related to the ARA funding was awarded to Nevada Health Centers on December 8, 2009. We have until December 7, 2011 to expend the funds or to obligate the funds. The typical way that works is we have to spend, we have to cause the expenditure to be burdened. And then we have 90 days after the end of December the 7th, at least as it stands right now, to actually disperse the money. The money is available to be released. We have to simply apply for, we have to vouch for it and show that those monies were expended in order to be able to release the funding. So it's available to us completely, and we have an obligation to perform by a date certain.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Somewhat, because my question is more so from the City of Las Vegas standpoint, Mr. Arant. You answered my question, Mr. Chase, but as far as the safeguard from the City of Las Vegas standpoint, where is our safeguard as far as what's before us here today as far as to sell our asset?
Sure. And I didn't answer that part of the question. Forgive me. Like all our purchase-and-sale agreements in our business parks, we do have a safeguard, a fail-safe, if you will, where if the construction doesn't start and finish within the schedule that we've allotted for the project, we have the ability to repurchase the property. Basically, we hand the sale proceeds back to Nevada Health Centers, repurchase the property, and then rent or the property. So if there were something to go wrong, and again, we have no reason to believe that, the money's in place, it's in the bank, and it's just a matter of proceeding quickly to spend the money. But if for some reason, the project did not start construction and title already transferred to Nevada Health Centers, we simply repurchase the property with the sale proceeds that were given to us. We have the property back. We have site control, and then we're protected. So that's, it's a repurchase mechanism. It's a common thing that we've done, not only in Enterprise Park, but in the Las Vegas Technology Center. So we are protected.
So are we, so at the end, 12 months from now, 18 months from now, do we repurchase at the price we purchased it? I mean, at the price we sold it?
It's a...
Or at the higher amount in the event that the value of the land increases?
It's fixed price, the price that it's sold for, we repurchase. So we're not out any funds. It's something that protects us and keeps us in the driver's seat, so to speak, to make sure the construction's completed.
Okay. And, Mr. Chase, when do you project the Nevada Health Center to be up and functional and operational?
We expect to complete the project before November 30.
Of 2011?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's aggressive.
Yeah, we've got a very aggressive plan. It's being driven by both the architect and the project manager, and we're very pleased with it.
Right. And, Mr. Arant, in closing, do you have a rendering of the building so that we can show the audience and the viewers?
I don't believe I have one with me today. I do know that it's going to be heard on this afternoon's planning session. So the architect and the team will be there with a rendering then.
Okay. I appreciate that.
And certainly, we'll make it available on our website also, so folks can go to our website, lasvegasnevada.gov, or redevelopment, lvrd.org, and we'll have a rendering of the facility as well.
Good. That was a nice plug with that Mayor and Council. I would like to move for approval of this item, subject to all conditions. And also, Mr. Arant, if you will, this afternoon, have those renderings so that we can show them as well, because it's a very beautiful building, and I believe it's a step in the right direction as far as creating very quality developments on the vacant parcels of land that currently exist within the Enterprise Park. And I believe that your development will most definitely be an added addition to the community. So thank you so very much for your support and willingness to come into the community and do business.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's vote on Item 50, then. Post. Motion carries. And Item 44.
Move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 45, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Fiscal Year 2012, City of Las Vegas Tentative Operating Budget. This applies to all awards. Ms. Faldor.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Candy Faldor, Finance Director. I've got a quick overview of the tentative budget that we plan to file on April 15. So we'll start in. What I want to tell you is a few highlights to begin with of how we got to filing of this tentative budget and where we are today. This chart, kind of hard to read for some of your viewers. I did provide you a handout up at your seats if you'd like to follow it. This first page describes some of the cuts that we have made between 2008 and today, fiscal year 11, to get to this point. We've broken it out by functions so that you can see that in public safety, we've cut 9.8% to date. In public works, 49.2%. In general government, we've reduced our budget from 2008 by 43.6%. So our current estimate for fiscal year 11, we're estimating that we're going to meet a $461 million expenditure budget. That represents an average 20% cut in the general fund. The next page is some of the expenditure assumptions that we used to build this tentative budget. For labor, there are no COLA increases for employment. There are no resets of the fiscal year 11 concessions that we received. There are base adjustments for employee share of PERS increases that'll be realized this year. We reduced labor by $3 million for executive and appointed positions that were removed. And we're seeking additional rollbacks in employment costs within the general fund. On the non-labor budget for tentative, we started by the assumption that everything would remain flat. We looked at that, held them to that as we built the budget. In the general fund, this one represents what we're projecting for fiscal year 11 that will end and what we've built for the tentative budget for fiscal year 12. So as you could see, on the revenue side, for fiscal year 12 on consolidated tax, all we're anticipating is a modest CPI increase. Property taxes, we estimate that they're going to see a reduction of about 11%. We're holding flat on franchise fees, others. And then in transfers, in fiscal year 11, if you'll recall, we had one-time transfers in of funding that we took from internal service funds and other one-time monies that we transferred in to cut down on the shortfall for 11 of $14.5 million. We'll see a reduction in that in 12 because we do not have any other overages in the internal service funds. But we do have some interest that's been accrued in an enterprise fund and in one special revenue fund that we'll transfer in for $6.1 million. It's one-time monies. The expenditures that we talked about, we've built the wages and benefits to be at $241 million. What we did see this year that helped us from our initial projections is Metro has come in with a reduction in the last couple of weeks that'll bring us down to operations. The city's portion will be $122 million. They're still continuing to look at their budget as we move towards final, and we will be working with Metro as they do that. So we see a shortfall of $7.9 million for 12. The structural deficit would have been $14 million if we didn't have that interest to transfer in of $6.1 million, and we'll take that out of fund balance. So the ending fund balance at the end of 12, we project a $67 million. That breaks down on this recap of revenues. You see the revenues at 447, the expenditures of 455. The operating deficit, as it is now, is $8 million. We're going into 12. We're projecting with a $75 million fund balance. We'll end at $67 million, and that will reflect a budget percentage of $15 million. Excuse me, 15% of revenues at the $67 million. Now, I just want to touch base briefly on what we're filing for the capital improvement plan in the tentative budget. You'll see the breakdown here. It's approximately $430 million. This is represented by projects that are currently being completed that this city council has authorized and are funded. We have city facilities of approximately $87 million, as you see here, fire services, public works, parks and leisure at $115 million. That will be funding that you authorize. That will be snipperment of funding out there, and it's the completion of those projects. We have not given any new projects money for the tentative budget. We are currently identifying possible funding sources for capital projects as we move to the final budget, and we will meet with you again before we finalize those to prioritize any of those So going forward, the redevelopment agency will be filed with the tentative budget. That is pretty much a status quo. The revenues that the redevelopment is getting at this time is used as covering operations and the debt service for projects that were already in place in the RDA. The tentative budget will be filed with the Nevada Department of Taxation on April 15. State revenue projections, we received an update yesterday from the state, and staff has started the analysis... has started the analysis and the review of those. We will be reviewing it with the city manager's office with an eye towards what we can do for final. Departmental meetings, we've had initial meetings with each department head on these operating budgets, but as we move towards final, we know that we need to see if there's other areas that we can pare down on, so we'll be meeting with the departments again and with the city manager's office to identify some of those areas. There is a budget hearing that's set by statute that will be held in these chambers on May 17th, and then we will final, file budget, final budget with the Nevada Department of Taxation on June 1st. With that, I'm happy to accept any guidance that you have for final budget, or if you have any questions on filing of tentative.
Fine, thank you. Are there any comments or questions that Ms. Faldor should hear or be asked?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you. The handout you gave me, two of the pages are numbered, but the other pages aren't, at least in the handout I have. So I have a Page 6 and a Page 5 that are numbered, but the other pages aren't numbered. So what I'm going to ask you to do is turn to what I'm going to call Page 2, which starts with highlights. Thank you. That covers a four-year fiscal period, is that right? Fiscal '08 through fiscal '11?
Three years. It ended with '08, so it's actual operations for three years.
So it's a three-year period. The, under public safety, the percentage cut over those three years is almost 10%, but it certainly represents one of the largest categories or sectors of cuts, that being the $311,000 figure, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now, turning to Page 4, what I'm calling 4, which is titled "General Fund", under metro operations, the projected contribution of $122 million, is that consistent with Metro's current proposed budget as far as our contribution? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it is. That is what's been communicated to us when we've met and discussed it with the sheriff and Karen Keller.
And we have also had discussions with the sheriff about perhaps going a little lower than that from both the city and the county?
Yes. They are going back to look at what they can do within their budget to lower the contribution by the city and the county.
And then what I'm going to call Page 5, which is titled "The FY12 General Fund Recap", the ending fund balance, the projected ending fund balance of $67 million, that is 15% of our projected general fund budget for fiscal 12.
Yes, sir.
And that is a good percentage. That is consistent with our policy of maintaining, what is our policy? What is our-
Our policy had been 12%. This council suspended it in these economic times to 10%, and I would say, as a snapshot of looking at this one year, 15% appears to be a very good fund balance. But as we've shown you in our modeling, as we look out at a five-year model, as the trending we're seeing in our revenues, and that what we expect to see with modest increases, we're hoping for CPI in sales tax, and the reduction in assessed valuation that's impacting our property tax revenues, that 15% will be eaten into drastically over the next three to four years, and will not come close to even being double-digit fund balance.
And that's what I thought, and I wanted you to articulate that to our viewers so that when we continue, because under your, under this proposed fiscal 12 tentative budget, where we have a proposed shortfall of about $8 million, I wanted everybody to hear that that's why we have to keep looking for ways to reduce our costs.
That's the absolute truth. The current model that we have now that we've shared with you before, if we build in those modest CPI increases into our current trending on consolidated tax, and look at what's happening in our property tax, we're showing that we would be in a deficit fund balance in five years without taking other actions on the expenditure side of this picture as we move forward. That's why we continue to work with our bargaining groups, we continue to look at our non-labor, where we can cut, and finding efficiencies as we're executing these budgets each year and moving forward.
And this is without asking any of our citizens to the extent that we, as a council, can do to pay any increased taxes. Isn't that right?
That's correct. We have not built a tax increase into this budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much. We have a motion, please.
Yes, Your Honor, to accept a report as given to us.
Okay, let's vote, please. Thank you. Post, please. Motion carries, thank you. Mr. Carter, the reason I asked you to stay, if you feel you didn't have enough time, you're more than welcome to come back this afternoon and speak of citizen participation. Just wanted you to understand that.
Do we know what time?
We don't know, but if you watch Channel 2, you'll probably see us moving along towards that end.
Okay.
All right? Okay. Item 46 is discussion and possible action on an estimated allocation of $1,98,706 in FY 2011 to 2012, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS with the acronym HOPWA, grant funds to the City of Las Vegas by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and this pertains to all words. Mr. Harson.
And could I go ahead and have items 47 and 48 considered safe?
Sure, certainly. Item 47 is discussion and possible action on an estimated allocation of $225,482 in fiscal year 2010 to 2011, emergency shelter grant, ESG funds, to the City of Las Vegas by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and this pertains to all words. And 48 is discussion and possible action on an estimated allocation of $5,540,639 in fiscal year 2011 to 2012, community development block grants, CDBG funds, to the City of Las Vegas by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. All words are included in that as well. Mr. Harson.
Thank you, and good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Steve Harson, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services. Before I turn the presentation over to Tom McGrath and Devindor Pappas, who are the Chair and Co-Chair of the CDRB, I want to give you a quick, brief overview. The CDRB consists of 13 members that was appointed by the Mayor and Council. These 13 representatives will be advising the Council on the allocation of a portion of our federal funding dollars. The board members committed over 312 hours over several meetings, including their personal time, collecting information, and listening to presentations, and making their assessment for the recommendations. Each board member reviewed over 34 applications in order to evaluate the merits of each project and focused on the priorities of homeless, seniors, youth, and special needs. The recommendations will be, that are being presented today, represent three different funding sources, and that's your community development block grant, which is CDBG, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, which is HOPWA, and emergency shelter grant, which is ESG. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Thomas and Devindor.
Mr. Harson, will one of these lady or gentleman tell us who the members of the board are, because they certainly deserve individual recognition.
Absolutely, yes.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, and thank you, Stephen. Thomas McGrath, Chairman of the Community Development Recommending Board. At this time, I would like to cite the names of our committee members here. We have Mike Aker, Audrey Esselin, Verla Davis-Hogard, Lou DeSalvio, Mary Ann Golden, Pam Hartley, Rodney Jordan, Phyllis McFadden, myself, Carmen LaShawn Miller, and Devindor Pappas. If I could ask them to please stand.
Thank you. Right back there.
The city is limited by federal regulations to allocating only 15% of its community development block grant funds to public service projects. The city set aside $175,664 in CDBG dollars to partially fund the Safe Key recreational and track break programs. The programs serve well over 3,000 low-income children and their families throughout the city. These children receive tutorial assistance, cultural arts experience, in addition to recreational activities after school and during track breaks. The board reviewed 29 CDBG public service applications from local nonprofit agencies requesting a total of $1,514,523. The total funding available was $655,432. All applicants for each program were asked to prioritize their funding needs to assist the board in allocating such limited funding. Agencies were informed that the council priorities for this upcoming fiscal years were homeless outreach and prevention, youth programs focusing on academic skills, and early childhood development, special needs populations, and seniors. The board recommending, recommended funding for 25 of the 29 CDBG public service applications in the total amount of $655,432, as listed in the agenda memo. In closing, I would like to say thank you, Mayor. I have served on this committee for five years, and you have made it a point every year on our closing day to come and say thank you to all the committee members. That means a lot.
Well, that's the least I could do. I really, I'm going to interrupt you, because I don't deserve any thanks. The work that these folks do is extraordinary. They take such heat for us in making the recommendations that wouldn't early would be reposed to us, and they study it, they have thick notebooks that they go through, they're well-prepared, they put a lot of time into this, they take their job so seriously, and the least I could do is go over. All I can tell you is this year, you were punished as a result of our budget problems, because those were the worst cookies I have ever seen in my life. I mean, I was ashamed to be the mayor of the city of Las Vegas and taking these volunteers and feeding them. I have an idea, though. We have an expert on the city council when it comes to food. Councilman Anthony, next year, when I'm not here, I'm going to charge you with the responsibility of visiting these good folks, congratulating them for the hard work that they do, and making sure that they get a decent meal.
It's going to be Greek food, though.
Fair enough.
It's okay. That'll work.
Thank you.
And thank you, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Now, I would like to introduce Devindor Pappas, this year's co-chair, to summarize the remaining recommendations.
Thank you. Just to jump in real quick, since we're thanking everybody, I'd like to take a moment on behalf of the board to thank the city staff, Steve and Lisa, for directing this program and providing us with these amazing staff people that support us. If you guys could stand for me, Marty, Sean, Tammy, and unfortunately, Leonard is not with us. The city staff is our unsung heroes in these programs. We volunteer our time and we do all the work, but they do all the preparation. And if you guys were to see the notebooks that were provided, and all the work that's gone into these programs, the staff is incredible, and we wouldn't be able to do it without them. The city is the designated recipient of housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, which is HOPWA, for all of Clark County, Nevada. The board reviewed five HOPWA applications that were requesting a total of $1,381,624. Total funding available was $1,065,745. The board recommended funding for all five of the HOPWA applications in the total amount of $1,065,745, as listed in the agenda memo. This funding will provide services to address the needs of persons affected by HIV/AIDS, including rental assistance, affordable housing, case management, and emergency services. The total funding available for the ESG program was $214,208. There are five agencies currently licensed for emergency shelter operations. The ESG funds were divided amongst those agencies as listed in the agenda memo. These ESG products will provide shelter to address the needs of homeless persons and operational costs for emergency shelters. At this time, we'd like to ask if you have any questions?
Are there any questions? Then I think we should have a motion on item 46 after that presentation, please.
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to follow staff recommendation for approval of this item.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Two more, 47, 48.
I know, are we going to hear a further presentation as far as the shelter grant?
We consolidated it all.
Oh, it's all consolidated, okay. We have a motion then on 47, 48, please.
I move to follow staff recommendation for these items, and again, I would like to take, personally thank all of you for your time and effort and the work you do for us, and like the mayor said, you're taking a lot of heat off us, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's vote on 47 first. Please vote. Motion carries, and let's vote on 48, too. There's been a motion. Please vote. Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Harson. Appreciate it. Okay, 49 is R13-2011, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution to implement an employment plan policy designed for City of Las Vegas economic development projects. This pertains to all words, and the item is related to the RDA item number 4, RA-4-2011, which Mr. Arndt spoke about for about five hours this morning. Yes, Mr. Arndt?
For the record, Bill Arndt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. By reference, I'd like to incorporate my remarks from this morning onto the record. This item is simply to include a new policy for our economic development projects to encourage diverse hiring, where we're encouraging 30% of new jobs be filled by city residents in economic development projects receiving city incentives, and projects that meet that would get a 10% additional incentive for those projects. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions to Mr. Arndt or any comments? We have a motion, please.
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to follow staff's recommendation as well as the RDA's recommendation for approval of this item, with all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you. We'll go on to item 51. This is Senior Citizen Law Project Advisory Board. The term of Margarita Mathis expires April 18, 2011. The procedure is to require appointment by the city council, and the options are to reappoint Ms. Mathis or to appoint a new member to represent the senior organization category. Ms. Vogel?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Ms. Mathis is eligible for reappointment under the rules. She's a valuable member of our senior advisory board, has good attendance, she is the publisher of the senior guide, which is very helpful in the senior community, and we recommend her reappointment.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Broton?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to follow Ms. Vogel's recommendation, please. She just never lets us stray yet.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Item 52 is Bill Number 2011-5, Updates Permitting Identification and Securing Requirements for News Racks, Including Authorization for Permit Stickers. Did you want to be heard?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to-
Yes, Mr. Avantes.
Yes, Mayor, I would just say, I want this Department of Public Works, if I may, I'd like to add an amendment that would allow provision for the news rack fees to be paid in installments, and if you permit me, I'd like to read that into the record.
Certainly.
This would be under Section 13.24.025. It would be Paragraph C. Upon the request of a person who owns or operates more than 100 news racks, the director may authorize an owner or operator to pay the sticker fees described in Section A in installments rather than requiring full payment before issuance. The authorization shall be in the form of a written agreement authorized and approved by the director, which may contain provisions that provide a remedy in the event timely payments are not made. Such provision may include, without limitation, provisions authorizing the suspension or replication of the permit sticker- replication of the permit sticker and the removal of the news racks.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have it read with that amendment?
Yes, Mayor, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2011-5, First Amendment, in order to relating to news racks, updating permitting identification requirements, including authorization for permit sticker fees, authorizing the voltage, the bolting of news racks to sidewalks, and providing for related matters.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you want to be heard?
Yes, good morning, Mayor, Members of the Council. Shawna Hughes, 3960 Howard Hughes Parkway, representing Southwest Advertising, who has up 350 approximately news racks in the city of Henderson.
Bruce Henderson.
Can I, do you believe I said that? I can't believe I said that. Las Vegas!
Then go to Henderson.
It's a long habit to break. In the city of Las Vegas, about 350 news racks. She has a very serious concern that there will be unintended consequences for the adoption of this ordinance, such that the legitimate news rack owners and operators will leave, and you'll have a considerable increase in the number of handbills, which I think is something everybody can agree would not be a positive improvement. Councilman Ross was kind enough to continue this item one time so we could have these discussions. I would like to respectfully request one more continuance. Your assistant was very kind and called me last night, but I was on the 15 as she read me the amendment and didn't quite get the whole thing, so I was wondering if it would be possible for a short continuance to continue our discussions about the ordinance itself and this amendment that you offered this morning.
I might be able to help with this before you can inject. I understand from the clerk that this dies if it's not adopted today.
You'd have to reintroduce?
Have to be reintroduced, that's correct.
So that would be a little bit longer continuance in that case?
And I believe it would also have to come back to recommending, right, Brett?
That's correct.
Councilman Ross?
With your permission, Mayor. Ms. Hughes, I appreciate, you have not had time to digest the change to the ordinance, because I think it's actually a very effective tool to help your client specifically, so that she can stay in operation. But you do understand, we're not recouping our costs for just our own labor going out there handling these news racks. And the ordinance actually protects the news rack owners from theft and vandalism and the whole nine yards. So I think if this thing dies, we're going to start all over again, Ms. Hughes, and I apologize, but I'm going to...
I understand.
I would recommend to you, Mayor, and councilmembers, that we move forward with it. I think Jorge's team has come up with a brilliant plan to help your client, and I think it'll work. I think if it doesn't, I think we might have to review this again.
And I appreciate that offer, and I think I will take you up on that, see how it goes for six months or so, and hopefully her fears will not be confirmed, and if, then I'll come see you again.
Well, and the idea, too, is we certainly don't want her out of business. We want to protect her business. At the same time, we want to cover the taxpayers at the same time, and...
It's a difficult situation, because we know that the people who are operating illegally are really the ones that are at issue here, not the valid operators such as my client.
And you know, of course, through the mayor, again, you know, of course, that we create these laws and these ordinance to protect the legitimate people, and then we look back down the road and say, "Okay, what did we do wrong? How can we fix it?" So I think that's where we're at today.
I agree with you, and I appreciate the offer to come talk to you again about this in a few months after we get a little feel for how it's working.
You bet.
Thank you again.
No problem. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, Mayor. We already have it read.
It was ready. Just get a motion.
Okay.
My motion would be for approval, Mayor.
Thank you, Council.
As First Amendment?
As First Amendment.
Thank you, Council. Let's vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Fifty-three is Bill number 2011-10, adopts a 2009 edition of the International Building Code, together with amendments there, too. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, Mayor.
Your Honor, if I could, before reading it, I think Mr. Knight wants to suggest that we read all of these amendments to these codes together and take them as separate votes, but I can read them all at once, if that's what you'd like. Is that your request, Mr. Knight?
Yes, Chris Knight, Director, Building and Safety. This is a packet that we bring forward every three years to do the technical updates to our building codes, and it's the entire suite of codes. So if you could open with your indulgence, Mayor, items 53 through 60, and you could handle them all as one issue.
Fine. I'll read them all, then. That's good. Fifty-four is Bill number 2011-11, Updates the City's Administrative Code Related to the Administration of Various Building and Technical Codes. Fifty-five is Bill number 2011-12, adopts a 2009 edition of the Uniform Plumbing Code, together with amendments there, too, to the City's Plumbing Code. Fifty-six is Bill number 2011-13, adopts a 2009 edition of the Uniform Mechanical Code, together with amendments there, too, as the City's Mechanical Code. And fifty-seven is Bill number 2011-14, adopts a 2008 edition of the National Electrical Code, together with local amendments there, too. Bill number 2011-15, which is item number 58, adopts an updated version of the Southern Nevada Amendments to the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code. Fifty-nine is Bill number 2011-16, adopts a 2009 edition of the Southern Nevada Pool Code. Sixty is Bill number 2011-17, adopts the 2010 edition of the City of Las Vegas Amusement and Transportation Rides Code as replacement for the 1993 edition of that code. That's it, right? Okay. And Councilman Barlow, I assume you'd like them all read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2011-10, in order to adopt the 2009 edition of the International Building Code, together with the amendments there, too, and providing for related matters. Bill 2011-11, in order to update the document entitled a supplemental document, many of the Uniform Administrative Code 1997 edition is adopted in LVMC 16.02.01OB, interrelated matters. Bill 2011-12, in order to adopt the 2009 edition of the Uniform Plumbing Code, together with amendments there, too, and provide for related matters. Bill 2011-13, in order to adopt the 2009 edition of the Uniform Mechanical Code, together with amendments there, too, as the City's Mechanical Code, interrelated matters. Bill 2011-14, in order to adopt the 2008 edition of the National Electrical Code, together with local amendments there, too, and provide for related matters. Bill 2011-15, in order to adopt an updated version of the Southern Nevada Amendments to the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, interrelated matters. Bill 2011-16, in order to adopt, by reference to 2009 edition of the Southern Nevada Pool Code, interrelated matters. And finally, Bill number 2011-17, in order to adopt the City of Las Vegas Amusement and Transportation Rides Code, 2010 edition, as a replacement for the 1993 edition of that document, and provide for related matters.
Madam Clerk, do we, can we do it in one motion or all those? Separate motion? All right, Councilman Barlow, if you'd make separate motions, please.
Item 53, move for approval.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Fifty-four?
Move for approval.
Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Fifty-five?
Move for approval.
Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Fifty-six?
Move for approval.
Let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Fifty-seven?
Move for approval.
Vote, please. Motion carries. Fifty-eight?
Move for approval.
Let's vote. Motion carries. Fifty-nine?
Move for approval.
Let's vote. Motion carries. Sixty?
Move for approval.
Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 61, Bill 2011, is eligible for adoption at a later meeting, so we're going to move on to the new bills. The new bills, 62 and 63, Bills 2011-19 and 2011-20, will be heard at the Recommending Committee meeting on Tuesday, April 19, 2011. Would you be kind enough to read the bill?
On behalf of your honor, Bill number 2011-19, in order to expand and clarify the applicability of certain parking-related prohibitions relating to city-owned parking lots, city-owned parking garages, and public rights away into protected matters. And finally, Bill number 2011-20, in order to authorize installment purchase agreements for taxable direct-pay clean renewable energy bonds and taxable direct-pay qualified energy conservation bonds for the purposes of financing energy conservation and renewable energy projects, authorizing the execution of the agreements and other documents related there, too, and provide for the effective date hereof.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow, will you be here on April the 19th to hear those bills?
I will be.
Great. And Councilman Anthony, will you be available?
I will.
All right, then I'll sign these bills to you two gentlemen, and at this time, we'll Okay, folks, good afternoon. We'll start our afternoon calendar by calling item number 65. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have items number 78 through 82, GPA 39489, rezoning 39490, variance 39492, Site Development Review 39491, and Special Use Permit 40564. Applicant Secoria Electric Owner Sagebrush Property Adventures LLC at 4485 North Rainbow Boulevard. The applicant requests that to be held withdrawn without prejudice. Items 83 and 84, 83 and 84 is a variance 40579, and Special Use Permit 40577. Applicant owner Conan and Jessica Turner at 6308 Jennifer Court. It's been requested by the applicant to be held that, to hold that in abeyance until our June the 1st, 2011 meeting. And item number 92 is a Special Use Permit 40739. Applicant A Sloan Company Owner VF Trust at 519 East St. Louis Avenue. The applicant requests that to be held in abeyance until our April the 20th, 2011 meeting. Are there any other items, councilmembers?
I just, I think our council had an item that we were taking off. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you.
Yes.
Councilman, with regard to item... With regard to item 85, you and I discussed that Public Works Department, Planning Department, and the City Attorney's Office were discussing the proposed condition. Do we best if we had two weeks to continue working on the condition with you and the applicant? Then we thought it would be best if we could hold that item. So we're asking, we, so we would ask to abate for two weeks.
So item 85 is a Site Development Review 37363, abeyance item. Site Development Review, Public Hearing, applicant owner Leeds Foundation Trust, to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer and no planning materials along the north, and these perimeters where there are, where three and four feet were previously approved, respectively, on 2.81 acres at 3901 West Charleston Boulevard. It's in Ward 1, and the staff's asking that to be held in abeyance until our April the 20th, 2011 meeting. Are there any other items? Hearing none, Your Honor, make a motion. Bring these items forward, take the appropriate action, please.
Thank you very much. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 66 is going to be a public hearing and possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 3332 Mariner Bay Street in the amount of $5,278.75, and assess a maximum of $48,550 in daily civil penalties. The property owner is Bank HSBC USA, N.A., T.R.S., and this is in Ward 2. This is a public hearing, which is now open.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Devin Smith, Neighborhood Response Manager. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Building and Safety declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken or an appeal filed, the Department of Building and Safety hired American Demolition to remove all trash and debris, cut and remove all high weeds and dead grass and vegetation, and apply an herbicide. To date, there have been 10 inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property, based on Zillow.com, is $186,000. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a $705 invoice for American demolition, in addition to other fees, for a total of $5,278.75, and consider assessing a maximum of $48,550 in daily civil penalties. Your Honor, just for the record, the bank has been notified, certified mail, twice, and we've had no response from them. And the prior property owner was notified four times with no response.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions to Mr. Smith? Okay, are the owners here or the bank here? Okay, you've been notified, so you're not here at your peril, okay? Your public hearing.
Thank you. Todd Parlow, 240 North 19th Street. And what I have to say, Your Honor and Councilmen, also refers to the other items on this that are owned by banks. This is an article taken from the progressive populace, and I know that this is a lefty paper and all of that, but still, these banks are pulling off some illegal crap. And if you're going to get any money, I'm, if I could, it's, it gets me so upset, I can't even talk. So if I just give this, and maybe you could all read it.
Okay.
Because I mean...
Okay.
There's, there's, you've, at some point, we've got to confront these banks.
Okay. If you'd be kind enough to make copies for all of us, it doesn't have to be done right now, but if we could get it by tomorrow, we'd sure appreciate it. Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and this is Councilman Wolfson's word.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Smith, I'm going to ask you some questions, please. I don't mean to catch you off guard, but I'm working from the packet that was given tonight, okay?
Okay.
I'm a little bothered by the process, and maybe now is not the time to talk about how we correct it, but maybe now, as well as all the other times we've brought this up, is the time to start talking about correcting this process and how long it takes, okay? This case started when a citizen faxed a complaint to the city, and I'm going to say that probably happened April 7th. And I've got the pre-abatement pictures and the post-abatement pictures. And this is a single-family residence in a nice neighborhood in the lakes. So probably a neighbor got fed up with looking at the condition of this yard, faxed in a complaint on April 7th. Case was opened. It was five months from the receipt of that complaint until the abatement. Why does it take so long, five months, from when we receive a complaint from a neighbor to correct the nuisance? Now, I know we have to go out, we have to do some inspections, we have to give a property owner notice, and maybe now is not the right time, because I did catch you a little off guard, but, I mean, look at the pictures. Why does it take five months to hire a company to go in and probably in one day, maybe a couple days, when you've got a tree hanging like that, correct this nuisance? If I lived on this street, I'd think, you know, maybe the city should take 30 days. You know, maybe it takes 30, 45 days to give the property owner due process, send him certified mail. Can you explain this to me?
I can, and that's actually one of the things that we're working on right now, is to speed up this process. What I'm seeing in this particular one is when the property changed hands from the property owner to the bank, at that point, we held off and we started noticing the bank.
Tell me when that happened. When did it change hands? Because I thought I read somewhere that the bank, the current owner, became the current owner in December of '10.
Well, when we start noticing that the foreclosure process has started, if we can't identify a bank, we do contact the bank. We have certain properties now that are still in the owner's names, but we know that they're being taken back by a bank, they just haven't been recorded into the bank's name yet, so we start notifying the bank at that time.
Okay.
So I would have to really look through this and find out, but I see some conversations in the file.
And like I said, I apologize for catching you off guard.
Right.
What I'd like you to do in the next couple of weeks is give me a briefing.
Okay.
When you've had time to... When you've had time to check this out and do a little research, why it took five months from the time we received the complaint to do the abatement. My next question is, once we did the abatement, here we are, seven months later, being asked to assess monies to recoup our costs and then potentially impose daily civil penalties. Why is that a seven-month process?
And there again, that's something that we've been talking about, working on to speed the process. We've had such a backlog of cases that we typically only try to bring three to five before you at a meeting. We would probably need to do a meeting where I could take a whole afternoon to catch up if we were to do it that way. And that's really part of the problem, is we try not to overwhelm the council with twenty or thirty cases at one time.
Well, if you overwhelmed us with twenty or thirty cases, would we be caught up?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm in favor of doing twenty or thirty cases in one day or something, just to get caught up. Because to go seven months now, you know, there's the possibility of the ownership changing hands once or twice. Banks sell paper to another bank.
Correct.
If we, if I follow your recommendation today and impose the costs for abatement of fifty-two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for getting the daily civil penalties, who is going to be responsible for that debt?
The bank would be responsible, or if they sold it without a title search, the new owner would be responsible.
Okay, now, the bank, though, took over the property after this nuisance was abated, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is part of the discussion we need to have.
And I'm looking through my file here, and we actually had started having discussion with the bank in May of last year.
The same bank? The same bank, or is it a new bank?
This is consumer mortgage lending.
Well, that's a, that's a different bank than the bank that you're, that now owns the property.
A lot of times what we find is, if that's the bank, then this is a loan servicing company, and what they do is they buy the bad notes, and they try to renegotiate it with the property owner at a reduced price. And that's what it appears took place, because it originally was mortgage lending, May fourteenth of two thousand and ten.
Okay.
Who we, who we were having conversation with then.
I'm going to make a motion in just a second. But what I'd like is a briefing, maybe during our city manager bi-weekly or bi-monthly briefings, so that all of my colleagues can be briefed on this process, because it really needs improvement.
It does.
But we've been talking about it for years, or at least a couple of years, Devin. So I'd like you to make this a priority.
Okay.
Because the timeframe between the complaint and the abatement was too long, five months. And then from the abatement until we come now, and now we're going to assess penalties against a bank that probably had nothing to do with the nuisance, and maybe that's the right thing to do. I agree with you, Todd. You know, somebody, we need to get their attention somehow. So I'm really looking forward to some briefings and improvement in this process. Okay, my motion is to, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say, I agree with you, and it would be good if we could all have the discussion.
Okay. My motion is to assess the five thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, and then I would like just a twenty-thousand-dollar daily civil penalty.
All right, that's a motion. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Item sixty-seven is a public hearing and possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located thirty-twenty Brady Avenue in the amount of fifty-five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, and assess a maximum of thirty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. The property owner is Federal National Mortgage Association, and this is in Ward Three. It's a public hearing which I now declare open.
Again, mayor and council, Devin Smith, Neighborhood Response Manager. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Building and Safety declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Building and Safety hired American Demolition to remove all trash, debris, dead vegetation, shopping carts, discarded furniture and appliances, remove deteriorated, non-permitted metal shed in the rear yard, metal carport and driveway area, and post no trespassing signs. To date, there have been twelve inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property based on Zillow dot com is sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a three-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar invoice for American demolition, in addition to other fees assessed for a total of five thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, and consider assessing a maximum of thirty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Smith? Do you represent the Mortgage Association, sir?
Yes, I'm the broker for Fannie Mae.
Why don't you identify yourself for the record?
Juan Martinez, and broker owner Remax Executives, and I represent Fannie Mae and the servicer's Bank of America. This was all paid yesterday.
Oh, well, how much, how much was paid?
I think it was like fifty-five hundred ninety, five thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. So here it shows a payoff demand that's been paid. And we've taken over the property. It was assigned to us in February, and so we're maintaining it, and we are under contract, and we're closing this probably in about three weeks this month, so hopefully we see a family in this property here next month.
All right, any questions to this gentleman?
Sorry. I would like to know that the five thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollar fine has been paid. I trust the young man.
You need, you need something that shows it's paid, or, I'm sorry, Gary?
Yeah.
Let's see here. Shows it right here. Do I have this too? And Fannie Mae is very good in, on the preservation and maintaining, and so we're, we're good and we're on it. We inspect the property weekly, so you guys will have no other issues with this property?
Devin, do you, can you verify that?
I don't show on here anything that shows paid. And I'm not aware of it being paid.
It's paid yesterday.
Where was it paid?
We're pressing them. The, Fannie Mae and ourselves are, we're pressing the servicer to get this paid. The first one, we got notification. It took a process time, but they delivered yesterday.
They delivered what, to whom?
Bank of America servicer paid for these total fines of five thousand...
Five ninety-seven.
Fifty-five ninety-seven.
They, how did they do that, by check?
I believe they did it by credit card.
And did they pay the city?
I believe so.
Mayor?
I hear you.
City Attorney's Office?
Yes, sir.
It might be advisable to trail this. We can make a phone call up to Finance with that account number and verify, and then give you more confidence that, in fact, it's been paid. I haven't seen the paperwork, but we can certainly verify with them.
I certainly trust the young man representing it accurately, but I just want to make sure that it has been paid.
All right, so we'll trail this.
Yeah, please.
That's fine, and if, Mr. Still, will you be able to check it out?
Yes, if I can get that paperwork, I'll make a phone call.
Very good. If you'd be kind enough to provide the paperwork to Mr. Still, and we'll call you back as soon as he comes back. All right?
So it's hanging there, right?
Hanging there is right.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
No problem. Okay, we'll move on to sixty-eight. Public hearing and possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at thirteen oh nine North Twenty-Second Street in the amount of fifty-four hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents, and assess a maximum of twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. The property owner is Bank, Citibank, N A T R S, and this is in Ward Three. It's a public hearing which is now declared open. Mr. Smith?
Again, your honor, Devin Smith, Neighborhood Response Manager. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Building and Safety declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Building and Safety hired American Demolition to remove all trash and debris, paint over graffiti, cut and remove all high dead vegetation, board up all doors and windows in the main structure, and post no trespassing signs. To date, there have been eleven inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property based on Zillow dot com is eighty-nine thousand dollars. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include an eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar invoice for American demolition, in addition to other fees assessed for a total of five thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents, and consider assessing a maximum of twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. And your honor, just for the record, when the bank took this property over, they immediately got in contact with us. All the five thousand dollars has been paid, it was actually paid last week, the five thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents has been paid. Scott Wahlberg, who is the representative for the bank, was going to try to be here today, but couldn't be here till three o'clock. And I just told him that I would pass that information along.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes, comment, please. So then we can just strike this item, then?
No, we still need the, the, it was, had to be put on the record. We tried to strike it one time before, and you guys recommended that we went ahead, once they're on the agenda, to go ahead and bring them forward, and just because I don't have the ability to waive those daily civils, so it would be up to you to just...
Your honor, I would like to make a motion to accept the payment of five thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents, and to waive the maximum twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties at this time.
Okay, thank you. Before we vote on that, it is a public hearing if anybody wants to be heard. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. There's been a motion. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Smith, you'll stick around until we verify the situation. Item sixty-nine is a public hearing on local improvement district for special improvement district number fourteen eighty-five at Alta Drive, between Rancho Drive to approximately two hu, pardon me, two-hundred-and-seventy-five feet west of Lacy Lane, landscape maintenance. This is in Ward One. It's a public hearing which is now declared open.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Lori Leonard Dunford, Department of Public Works, Special Improvement District Office. This is the annual hearing for Special Improvement District fourteen eighty-five, Alta Drive Landscape Maintenance. There are thirty-seven parcels in the district. It is assessed on an area basis every year to cover the costs of the utilities and landscape maintenance. The assessments will be for the period July two thousand and eleven through June two thousand and twelve. There will be four quarterly payments with no interest, and the total for next year's assessment is sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. And there have been no protests filed with the city clerk's office. We did receive one letter from one of the property owners. We met with him last week, and his concerns are being addressed. He had asked for some replanting in his property where plants have died, and we are actually looking at that across the district.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? All right, it's a public hearing, folks. Would anyone like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I just want to thank this neighborhood for how nice that looks. I remember years ago before, well, before they put in the curved streets and that. I mean, this is really something, and just, I just really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard in the public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seventy is a public hearing on local improvement district for special improvement district number fifteen sixteen, Fremont Street Maintenance District, from Las Vegas Boulevard to Eighth Street, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand four hundred and two dollars, a special assessments capital projects fund. This is in Ward Five. It's a public hearing which is now declared open.
Thank you, mayor and council. Lori Leonard Dunford, Public Works Department, Special Improvement District Office. This is our other maintenance district. This is for Special Improvement District fifteen sixteen, Fremont Street. This is a commercial area vitalization project, and this is for the assessments and budget for fiscal year two thousand and twelve. There are thirty-four parcels in this district. It is also assessed on an area basis, and it also depends on what street the project, the property fronts. The assessment, there are fifteen-point-six-two acres in the assessment district. It is also for the maintenance costs from July two thousand and eleven through June two thousand and twelve, and the budget and assessments for next year are two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand four hundred and two dollars. The assessments are also quarterly, no interest, and they are levied each year to pay for the security, landscape and sign maintenance, utilities, promotional events, marketing and advertisement for the Fremont East District.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? It's a public hearing. Yes, sir.
Todd Farlow, the comments I made before go on this too. I appreciate what these merchants are doing, and Fremont Street really looks nice. I mean, all the way down. It's, it just is beautiful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. All right, we're advised on item number sixty-seven, which we'll recall. Sixty-seven is the property at thirty-twenty Brady Avenue, and there's a question as to whether payment, in fact, has been made and received, and we're advised that it has been. So it's up to the mayor pro tem to proceed on that basis.
Yes, your honor, I make a motion to accept full payment of the five thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, and further waive the civil penalties of thirty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars at this time.
Okay, that, did you want to be heard on that, Mr. Farlow?
This is concerning the upkeep on these properties, because we had several properties in our neighborhood that Fannie Mae had taken over, and they, they would clean out the weeds and that, but they would not keep up the green. They wouldn't keep the stuff watered. And this is the other thing I would like to put. When they put the no trespassing signs out, I wish they would put a note on their, you know, if the neighbors want to water this stuff, you know, you're not going to be thrown in jail. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing. If there's a motion, let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries, and the gentleman from Fannie Mae? You're all covered. No thirty thousand.
Well, now, wait, we, can we get it if we charge it?
Thank you, councilor.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
I need to go on a diet, too, by the way.
Items seventy, seventy-one through seventy-four are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the Planning Department. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items seventy-one through seventy-four?
Yes, your honor, make that motion, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Items seventy-five through seventy-seven may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Does anybody want to have...
Yes, your honor, I'd like to pull item number seventy-six, just to correct
Okay.
one of the conditions, please.
All right, then we'll read seventy-five and seventy-seven, then.
Well, can we, can we just go ahead and read seventy-six with the...
Sure.
And correct it?
Sure. Seventy-six is RQR four oh nine four six. The applicant is CBS Outdoor. The owner is three oh five Las Vegas LLC. Required review of a previously approved special use permit for a forty-foot-tall, fourteen-foot-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at three thirty East Charleston Boulevard in Ward Three.
Thank you. This, your honor, is, in, to me, it's in the Arch District, and we do have some construction going on on East Charleston Boulevard. And I would just like to have the new councilmember of the area take action on this in a year. So I requested from the applicant if they would allow us to have a one-year review on this item.
Okay, very good. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, Ryan Arnold, twenty-six twenty Regatta Drive. I just wanted to say a few things real quick, if you don't mind. Obviously, for the last two, I guess this is the third one-year review that we've done. We've done that out of respect for you, Mayor Protem.
I appreciate that.
And we'll accept another one-year review, but I did want to put on the record that if conditions don't change in the market and it's status quo, we're likely going to ask, you'll be gone, but we'll likely ask the new councilperson, we have a three-year review that's provided for by the code.
Mr. Arnold, I really appreciate that.
Mr. Farlow, I really appreciate that, but again, we do have those entryway lights supposedly gonna go on. The person that designed the lights passed away.
Right.
And staff has assured me that we will have them up in the next three or four months. And I don't know whether it will affect visibility or whatever, or what this, these signs are supposed to do, or these lights are supposed to do. And if it does, I just want the other councilperson to have a chance to say, hey, we need to take that sign down.
Fair enough. And again, we just want to have the ability to, you know, we're racking up a number of fees that typically we wouldn't, eight hundred dollars each time, so we just, at some point, need to ask for a little forgiveness.
So we changed the condition then to have a one-year review? Yeah. And with that, I make a motion to approve the item, your honor.
All right, very good. Let's vote on item number seventy-six, please.
She's not taking them all.
No, seventy-six was treated separately. Seventy-five and seventy-seven will be taken together. Okay?
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman? Okay.
I'm sorry. Would you like to make a verbal...
Yes. Okay, very good. So motion carries. We'll read seventy-five and seventy-seven again. Seventy-five is RQR four oh seven two four. The applicant is Westland Enterprises. The owner is Fred Cavley. Required review of a previously approved special use permit, which allowed a forty-foot tall, fourteen-foot by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at forty-five ten North Tenaya Way in Ward Four. Number seventy-seven is SDR four oh seven six six. The applicant is Nevada Health Centers. The owner is City of Las Vegas. Request for site development plan review for proposed two-story, thirty thousand, eight hundred square foot medical office on two-point-three-nine acre portion of a six-point-oh-seven acre lot at the southeast corner of Mount Morio Drive and Stella Lake Street in Ward Five. The planning commission recommends approval of items seventy-five and seventy-seven, and staff recommends approval of those items as well. May I pro tem to have a motion to approve items seventy-five and seventy-seven?
Are you pro tem carrying?
It's a, no, it's not a public hearing.
I would move to follow statutory approval of all these items with the conditions.
They are public hearings, okay? Anyone want to be heard on those items? Okay, I'll close the public hearing then. We have a motion, and let's vote on that motion, please. Motion carries. Thank you. We're now gonna skip to eighty...
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. Eighty-six and eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine and ninety. Eighty-six is ZON four oh seven five six. Request for rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to PR Professional Office and Parking. Eighty-seven is VAR four oh seven five seven. Request for variance to allow four parking spaces where five spaces are required. Eighty-eight is VAR four oh seven five eight. Request for variance to allow no perimeter screen wall, where a minimum six-foot tall wall is required adjacent to a residential zoning district. Eighty-nine is VAR four oh eight seven six. Request for variance to allow a lot width of forty-nine feet, where sixty feet is the minimum required. And ninety is SDR four oh seven five nine. Request for a site development plan review for the conversion of a twenty-four hundred and eighty-two square foot single-family residence to an office other than that listed with a waiver to allow no perimeter landscape buffers, where eight-foot wide buffers are required along the north, south, and east perimeters. The applicant owner is Pacific Woods Rentals Inc., pardon me, Pacific Woods Rentals LLC. The project is located on point one seven acres at seven seventeen South Hayes Street. The planning commission recommends approval of all items, and staff recommends approval of items eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, and ninety, and denial of item eighty-eight. These items are in Ward Three. They're all public hearings, which are now declared open. Yes, sir?
Justin Britton, eight thirty-two Trotter Circle, Pacific Woods Rental. I'm Pacific Woods Rentals.
Okay, you want to be heard? We'd like to be heard?
No, I'm good. If you have any questions, I'd like to entertain them.
Okay, that's fair. Any questions of the gentlemen? All right, it's a public hearing, folks. If anyone wants to be heard?
At the planning commission...
Identify yourself.
I'm sorry. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Is this the one that I'm thinking about that...
With the wall?
With the wall?
Yes, sir.
Through you. From the planning commission meeting, at one time, the neighbor wanted a solid wall out to the curb. They were gonna get together with the neighbors to see if the front part could be a living hedge or something on that effect, rather than a block wall, because a block wall, I'm just against that, but there needs to be some sort of...
Todd, I'm gonna make a motion that we put the block wall to the front of the houses, and from the front of the house to the street, we're gonna put in a two-block, two-foot block wall with a two-foot wrought iron on top of it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anybody else like to be heard with that understanding? All right, we'll close the public hearing then. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, your honor, item eighty-six, I make a motion for approval with all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries?
And on the variance, your honor, I make a motion to follow planning commission's statutory approval of this item with the conditions as stated.
Okay, eighty-seven, let's vote. Motion carries?
And on item eighty-eight, your honor, on the other variance, I make a motion to follow statutory motion for approval of this, as well as planning commission, with all conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries? Eighty-nine?
And on item eighty-nine, on the other variance, I make a motion to follow statutory motion as well as planning commission on this item with all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote. Motion carries, and finally ninety?
Yes, your honor, I make a motion to approve the site development review with the changed conditions. I'll have Flynn read that in the record, please.
The changed condition would be as follows relative to the perimeter wall. Construct a six-foot high wall beginning five feet back from the front building facade, extending back to the alley along the southern perimeter. Within the front yard setback area, the applicant shall construct a four-foot high wall consisting of two feet of wrought iron fencing over two feet of solid masonry. The location of the final termination of the wall shall be determined by the Department of Public Works to ensure that site visibility within the alley is maintained.
Thank you. Did you read that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I have talked to the neighbor to the south via the phone, and she agrees with this also, so I appreciate you working with us as well as trying to get work with the neighbor, and we have a win-win, so that would be my motion, your honor, with the conditions as changed.
Thank you. Let's vote. Motion carries. Good luck to you, sir.
Hey, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Your honor, councilman.
Ninety-one is SUP three nine eight two one, special use permit. It's gonna be a public hearing. The applicant is Money Tree Inc. The owner is Catsim LLC. Request for special use permit for an auto-licensed, for an auto-title loan used within an existing three thousand, ninety-three square foot non-conforming financial institution specified with waivers to allow a ninety-foot distance separation from a residential use where two hundred feet is required, a nine hundred and ninety-foot distance separation from a financial institution specified where one thousand feet is required in hours of operation from seven AM to eleven PM, where eight AM to eleven PM is allowed at twenty-nine fifty West Sahara Avenue. This is in Ward One. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now open.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, three hundred South Fourth Street. I'm here with Greg Borgel, planning consultant at the same address. I'm here on behalf of Money Tree. This is an application to allow the company to offer another business option to its customers in this difficult lending environment for auto-title loans. And the Money Tree operating at this site has been there since October two thousand and two, thus the request for waivers to residential separation and the other financial institution specified, which is actually eighteen hundred feet away when measured property line to the other business. The extra hour of operation would allow the Money Tree to offer this new use consistent with its current operating hours. No vehicles will be stored at this site, and the planning commission did unanimously recommend approval, so we ask that you follow planning commission's recommendation. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? All right, folks, public hearing. Anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I want to make sure that I understand this correctly, and that is that the business has been operating there as a financial institution since two thousand and two, I believe.
Correct. October two thousand and two.
And the addition of this use with the auto loan would not increase traffic a great deal?
We don't expect it to increase, and we do have more than enough parking.
Parking, more than enough parking. I was just, when I received this, and the planning department tells me that it's, it doesn't fit in with the environment, but it's already there, because it was granted that place before the rules and regulations were developed, right?
That's my understanding.
Well, my feeling is I would not grant the waiver on just if it was a self-imposed situation. My understanding is it's not self-imposed, because you had this financial institution, you're only adding another business aspect to it, and that you can't help it if the rules were made after you started the other one. If there's anybody here from planning that, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
Mr. Mayor, through to you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Tarkanian, yes, there were distance separation requirements applied to our financial institution specified, I believe, I'm not exactly sure of the year, but it's our understanding that this business was established prior to the establishment of separation distance requirements, and so we consider this to be a non-conforming use. That at one time was conforming, but since the regulations were adopted, it's no longer conforming.
All right. I wanted to make that clear, because I feel very strongly if it's self-imposed or not self-imposed hardship, and in this case, it is not, I believe, a self-imposed, and so I move to approve.
Okay, that's the motion. Let's vote, please.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Good day.
Item ninety-three is SUP four oh seven four seven, special use permit. It's a public hearing. The applicant is Graceful Facials and Bodywork Inc. The owner is sixty-six hundred West Charleston LLC. Request for special use permit for a seventeen-hundred-and-thirty square foot massage establishment with waivers to allow distance separation of a hundred feet from a religious facility where four hundred feet is required, zero feet from a residential use where four hundred feet is required, and seven hundred and thirty feet from another massage establishment where one thousand feet is required at sixty-six hundred West Charleston Boulevard, Suite one twenty-six in Ward One. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. Ruth Whitten, eighty thirty-six Slate Falls Street.
Okay, would you like to be heard?
Well, I just like the opportunity to go ahead and open up my business there.
All right. Are there any questions to the young lady? Hearing none. Any members of the public want to be heard? It's a public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
The fact of the matter that you're too close to a residential area, you're aware of that?
Yes, there is an apartment complex behind.
Right. And you have the, you already have a, do you have a business operating there at all in any way?
Yes, I also have a cosmetology establishment as well, which has been in operation since oh six.
Would that fall under the same situation?
Lynn?
No, it's a slightly different situation. In this instance, the separation distance for massage has been in place for some time. She's requesting to add massage to the establishment, so she does require that distance waiver. However, this is accessory massage within an existing salon business. Staff felt that there would not be any secondary impacts related to it, and so had recommended approval of the request.
Why do you have to pick these so close to the residential areas when all the residential people call and write in and say, why are we working through our waivers and our variances? I'm just, that's just a rhetorical question. You don't have to answer it.
What I understand is, I understand the concerns, because I actually saw something where someone categorized it as a massage parlor.
Yes.
Which is very different. I mean, this is therapeutic massage, and just the facility that I picked, it is enclosed, you know, and it just happens that the parking lot is up against a wall where there's apartments behind it.
And what are your hours of operation?
Monday through Thursday will be ten AM to eight PM, and Friday through Sunday will be ten AM to six PM. Development and planning did recommend that only be open on Sundays if there's clients, and I agree to that.
I will move to approve.
All right, that's the motion. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ninety-four is SUP four oh seven seven one, special use permit, a public hearing. The applicant is Roto LLC, and the owner is J&amp;L Property Leasing LLC. Request for special use permit for an eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-one square foot motor vehicle sales used at fifty-six hundred West Sahara Avenue. This is Ward One. Planning commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon. Jeff Donato, Phenomore Craig, three hundred South Fourth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one zero one. Here today on behalf of the applicant with regards to the request seeking the SUP for a used car dealership on West Sahara, fifty-six hundred West Sahara, and we agree with the conditions as amended by the planning commission, but we'd like to revisit two of the conditions. The first condition, number four, with regards to loading and unloading vehicles on-site. In further discussion related to this condition, the applicant feels that he can comply with this condition for the time being. However, as the business grows, he may not have enough room on his property to load and unload the vehicles. So we would request that this condition be stricken. And the other condition is condition number ten, related to the consolidation of the two parcels. We did request this to be deleted as a condition, as the tenant may have, may want to lease out that back portion of the property to other car dealerships for the purpose of storing vehicles, and would request that that item be stricken as well. Other than those two conditions, we agree with the other conditions as amended by the planning commission, and we are seeking your approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Folks, public hearing, if you'd like to be heard?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. And I see something shady going on here. The applicant says in the future, they want, they might not want to, they might not have the room to unload the cars on the site. And the next thing that he asks is that the lots be divided, be kept divided. It looks to me as if they say, okay, we'll unload the cars here because we have enough room, but then we're gonna rent the lot in the back, and then we aren't gonna have the room anymore. And this is why I think that the lot should be kept as a single unit. Thank you very much.
Welcome. You want to respond to the allegations of shadiness?
We're not saying that we intend on doing that, but we would like the flexibility that if the, if that option becomes available to us, that we can go ahead and move forward with that. In no way are we being shady in any way. We just want that option available to us in the future if it presents itself.
Okay. Anybody else like to be heard at the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I don't think you're being shady. I think you have been trying to work this out. We have tried to work it out, but as I've told you before, we have big problems on Sahara. One of those problems is that even though a rule was made before I was ever on the council, that you can't take those, unload those vehicles out in the street, it's still being done, not just in your area, up the street. So I have to say that... So I have to say that if it comes to a point where you think you need more flexibility, we could revisit it, but I would want to keep the conditions as they are now, so that, he did have a good point, you know? You might need more room in the front because you're going to use the back, but in any case, so there's no questions from the community. I would like to have this passed with all conditions that are there.
That's fine.
Within the item.
That's fine.
All right, that's the motion. Let's vote, please. Motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, 95 is ROC 41050, review of condition, a public hearing. The applicant is Brownmail, Inc. The owner is Toffee Enterprises. Request for a review of condition to delete conditions A and number two of a previously approved special use permit which restricted the hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to midnight seven days a week, and states the sale of individual containers of any size beer, wine coolers, or screw cap wine is prohibited. All such products shall remain in their original configurations as shipped by the manufacturer. Further, no repackaging of containers into groups smaller than the original shipping container size shall be permitted, and that's an end quote, at 8251 West Charleston Boulevard in Ward 2. The staff recommends denial. It's a public hearing which is now declared open. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashan Raj. My husband, Indraj Swatch, is the owner of the Express Mart and Liquor Store at 8251 West Charleston Boulevard. I'm here to request that the restriction on the sale of single cans of beer and wines please be lifted from our permit. Our store is located in the area where most of our clientele are very hardworking people, but on a very strict budget, and they're not used to buying three packs or six packs. It's usually one can of beer and wine, and sometimes even for that, we get paid with a handful of change. It's really difficult for us to maintain our business when all these clients about 125 to 150 sales a day have been leaving us consistently. At this point, we're using money from our other businesses, our UPS stores in the city of Las Vegas, UPS store in Clark County, and our other mini mart. We're using bits and profits from their store to run this store because we're just consistently losing the sale. Single cans of beer and wine, when people come to buy those, they also get small snacks, candy, chips, and we also losing those sales. Our plan for this store right now is to turn it into a 7-Eleven. We are in talks with the 7-Eleven Corporation. We'll have better hours, we'll be hiring more employees, but one of the conditions that 7-Eleven has is also that we should be allowed to have single sales, single cans of beers and wine. In this current economic climate where people are already reluctant to spend money like they have in the past, if we lose this, this upper, this chance or this permission to sell single sales, this is really, really difficult for us to maintain our business. We will eventually have to shut it down because now, like I said, we're using our other businesses to support this store, but since August 2010, it's just we are suffering a consistent downfall in our profits. We really need this permit to be able to sell single cans of beer and wine.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions to the young lady? Folks, it's a public hearing, if anybody would like to be heard.
Hello, my name is Hassan Joshua Collins, and I just want to quote something out of the Review Journal that was here, that was just in there today, but Assemblywoman Deanna Neal, Democrat, North Las Vegas, said alcohol consumption has a negative effect on families, and distributors try to market to poor people. And, you know, those, just those two statements right there are true, and I just would encourage the city council to deny this permit because we have enough drunkards and people that are, you know, using alcohol, and we should encourage morality, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Excuse me. I am Dorothy Pansik. I'm a partner of Toffee Enterprises, the owner, and I strongly urge you to lift the restrictions. People don't get drunk just from the one store. If they don't buy the liquor at this store, they will buy it at another one. And the point is, these people are in business, and you, it would be hurting the entire shopping center if they had to shut down, and that would impact all the other tenants. This way they're operating, they're good people, we have no problem with drunkards on our parking lot or any other thing. That's all.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Goodman, ma'am, please.
Yes, certainly.
Dorothy, thank you so much for coming down. I had the privilege of meeting, I think, your husband and your husband's partner. He's too chicken, he didn't want to come up today, so he sent the pretty one in the family to...
We're working on our public speaking issues.
Oh, you did great. He should have brought you yesterday into my office. But Dorothy, you own the shopping center, or you own the building that their business...
I own the whole shopping center.
Okay, well, thank you so much for coming down, and it means a lot to me that you came down here today to talk about the fact that you want the shopping center to be successful, you want your tenants to be successful. I think your husband said that you purchased this business last summer, is that right? So you've been in business now for six, eight months, so I can appreciate you're trying to be successful. Dorothy, they've been no problems as...
They've been wonderful.
As business operators?
It's very important that they succeed for the other tenants.
Okay, and how long have you owned this complex?
Oh, about 94 I bought it.
Okay, 15, 16, 17 years. Okay, thank you very much for coming down, Dorothy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, anybody else like to be heard at the public hearing?
Hello, I am Teresa Towns, and I come to speak on behalf of the consumption. Like it was said, that if they don't get it there, they go other places, and I think that since Ward 2 doesn't have all the community development that everyone else have in the city, I think that it should be allowed because all they're doing is going from one place and then bringing it back. So it would be a good idea for them to be able to sell their own packaged liquor in their own store in their own neighborhood.
Thank you.
Mayor Goodman, ma'am, please. What do you mean we don't have community development in Ward 2?
Well, I mean, what I mean by that is like, you know...
Step up to the microphone, please. We have a lot of community development in Ward 2.
Well, what I'm saying in Ward 2, I went down, and as they, the city was looking up in a rezoning and zoning area, they didn't find where they had a post, a VFW, American Legion, a community center. I mean, Ward 2 simply don't have it in North Las Vegas.
In North Las Vegas?
And I know because I went down there personally, so I know.
Did you miss speech? You said North Las Vegas.
Huh?
I thought you said North Las Vegas.
Well, Ward 2 in north and, well, it's borderline, north in the city where it goes, they meet kind of like me.
Okay.
So...
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll close the public hearing then.
Okay.
Would Ward 2's councilman like to make a motion?
I would. Just a couple of comments. First of all, once again, thank you for coming down, and thank your husband and his partner. You're, you're nice people, and what I have to do here is I have to balance public safety versus the desire to have folks have successful businesses, and we did our homework, and I told you, sir, yesterday, we looked up the calls for service for your business for the last year or so, as well as a business across the street, which is a tavern, a bar. Now, they're different from your, because you don't have, you don't sell alcohol for on-premise consumption like the place across the street, but both your businesses had very limited calls for service.
Right.
And that was important to me. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion for approval of your request with an added condition, because you're asking for two things. You're asking to expand the hours of operation to 24 hours a day, correct?
Correct. That's also one of the 7-Eleven requirements.
That's where I was going next, is, and that is your expectation is to purchase a 7-Eleven franchise.
Correct.
And your husband, I think, explained to me that that process may take about two to three months.
Yes.
Okay, and you're intent on doing that.
Correct.
Because part of the reason I'm, I'm going to give you a chance is because I think that a 7-Eleven would be a good thing in that, in that area.
We will also be hiring more people to facilitate the longer hours, almost twice the size of the staff we have right now.
Okay, because that's what I want. I want a successful business with more people working.
That's correct.
Okay, and the second thing you're asking for is the ability to sell single containers, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the concern I have. It's not so much the 24-hour aspect, but the single containers. So what I'd like to do is, Flynn, do I move for approval of these deleted conditions with the added condition that we have a six-month review at a public hearing in front of the council?
That is correct. A motion for approval would remove the conditions that are currently in place, the restrictions that are in place, and then an added condition for a review.
Okay, and that would be my motion. And what that means is that in six months, we're going to have this matter come back before the council to give this council an opportunity to see if there's been any increase in any trouble. I mean, hopefully you come back to me and you say, Mr. Wolfson, there's been no increase in trouble, in fact, you know, everything's been great, and we increased our business by 30%.
Right.
So that, that's what I'd like to do. So that is my motion.
All right, let's vote on that motion.
Thank you.
Vote, post, please. Motion carries, good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Item 96 is ROC 41174, review of condition, it's a public hearing. The applicant is the Smith Center. The owner is City of Las Vegas. Request for review of condition of a previously approved site development plan review to revise the Promenade Place and Clark Avenue parking garage elevations to add additional decorative elements where condition A required mesh screening on a portion of 5.10 acres at the northeast corner of Clark Avenue and Promenade Place. This is in Ward 5. The staff recommends approval. It's a public hearing which we now declare open. Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilman Myron Martin, 241 West Charleston. If you recall, back in January, we submitted our final plans for our parking garage, which the council was nice enough to approve, subject to some tweaking of the exterior elevations, which we've done, and given to staff, and I think Mr. Fag will tell you that we did what the city asked us to do, so we're here today to ask for your approval of what will be a very handsome parking garage.
Is it a parking garage for the ages?
It's a very nice parking garage.
Is it a parking lot, garage where I'm going to have pleasant dreams when I return home from watching Wicked and recognizing that I parked in that garage?
The Smith Center experience is going to be a great one. We can't wait to open on March 10th, 2012.
All right, or as Councilman Ross would suggest, would I be better off with a valet across the street or in that parking garage?
Well, Mayor, you, you may prefer parking in the city hall garage and walking across that beautiful pedestrian bridge that, that you're building.
I don't think I'll have that opportunity.
Give you access.
No, I won't be around, but maybe I'll have the mayor pro tem who won't be mayor pro tem then to bike me over or something.
There you go, buddy.
All right, okay. Any questions of Mr. Martin? Okay, I have a motion, please, from Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mr. Martin, thank you so very much for bringing back the rendering and also the scale of the beautiful garage and, and all of your work that you put into it, you and your entire staff, for a job well done, so I look forward to, I move forward for approval of this item subject to all, all conditions, and continued success to you and the Smith Performing Arts Center.
Okay, very good. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries, so it's March?
March 10th, 2012 is opening night. Wicked starts in August of that first year, and there are lots of great things that, that we'll be announcing soon that will fill up that season. It's very impressive what you're going to see.
Good, and is the structure behind that I see rising out of the ground, is that the Discovery Museum?
It is. I'm very pleased to report that not only the parking garage, but the Children's Discovery Museum is now under construction. It will be completed, the core and shell will be completed in time for the Smith Center's opening night in March. The core and shell, the building will be completed, and then that'll give the children's museum time to get inside the building and put in all the exhibits so that they can open a little later in the year in 2012, so we're, we're moving full steam ahead.
Very exciting for the city. Thank you.
It is. Mayor, I don't know if I'm, we'll have the opportunity to be in front of this council this year, but let me say to you and the mayor pro tem, and certainly Councilman Barlow, who's been such a critical member of our team, thank you all. This, this mayor and council has helped us realize a dream that some thought were, was an impossible dream to get to, and it's, without you, we would have never gotten there, and Mayor, thanks very much.
Well, and I appreciate that, but without you and your energy and the energy of Don Snyder and all the people who stepped up and put their money where their mouth is, this would not have happened, and this is one of those things that is a legacy for the city. Our children, their children, their children, and their children will be going to wonderful cultural events in that facility, and I think you've taken us to a whole new level as far as being a city, so.
Thank you.
We thank you. Okay, 97, Madam Clerk, would you please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements? Thank you. And this is a time for 98, which is citizens' participation. If anybody would like to address us, they have to limit their matters within the jurisdiction of the city council, and no subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please give us your name, and we'll put the three-minute timer on, and Ms. Barnes, you're number one.
Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident. I have a mailing address, a P.O. Box 466, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89125. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. Once again, I'm here addressing these programs that are threats to national security. I was hoping my name would be off. It's been a new year, I was hoping to start out prosperous, happy and healthy with this problem, but it looked like my health is getting worse. You know, my birthday coming up in June, I'll be a year older, it's not helping me. I'm, I'm not saying that all the trouble here is on Las Vegas, but it centers that there's someone here cooperating with these people from Louisiana, including my ex-husband, and I don't want people devouring me for income, because that's what it looks like. They're devouring me so they can have an income. The lies, there's unnecessary lies that are piled up on me day after day. I ride the bus trying to get the lies out of there because the doctor I have has retired. I've lost several doctors since this problem been going on to other cities. They can't afford the medical malpractice insurance here. I've lost several doctors, like I said, because of the problem on Nellis Air Force Base, and they don't want me out there, but I don't want people to keep reissuing that distress signal. That's a dangerous thing that gets in the hand of someone that's careless and irresponsible, and then they hurt someone that's sick that can't get in there, protect themselves, because they got a problem issuing that distress signal, which I brought it to the attention of this council, and maybe you can't have no control, I'm not blaming you or anyone here on the council. I'm just, I was just hoping to get some cooperation from the council and law enforcement on protecting citizens and, and medical people and protecting you all against this type thing, where people can go out there and get a hold of this distress signal, and it's a very dangerous thing when people are not using it wisely the way it's inscripted. And I'm told there are military people out there that can instruct a free person on how to use it to protect themselves against people using them to steal money and do fraudulent, illegal negligent things, such as dealing illegal drugs at my expense and then threatening my life because they don't want me telling it. I do not put these people in trouble. I'm willing to help them. I've asked them to give me a signature on a promissory note. I can't stand out there and pass out hundred dollar bills to help these people in distress. I'm in trouble because of this thing, but I can say if they will give me a signature on a promissory note, I encouraged my family back in January when I flew to Louisiana, sign this promissory note. This is something to protect you all and help you all because I'm in a position where I'm helpless, and people blame you because it's got my name on it, and someone uses it to hurt someone or even hurt me, and then I get to blame because the people at the top are looking in the computer and they see my name is on it, and they say, well, she's crazy, she shouldn't be using it, we told her not to use it. I'm not the one. Someone is lying, they weighing over me, and it scares me. I don't know, God help, what they using it for, but it's been reissued several times, and it's been issued out again, and it's just pathetic. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, it's my pleasure to be here, I'm honest with you guys. My name is Tameisha Hawkins Reynolds, and I live at 617 Treese Court Apartments. The reason for me... The reason for me being here today is because my sister, I have a sister, she's mental, mentally ill. And she has been arrested for, for DUI twice, two times, you know. I know it's, it wasn't her fault. You know, she got behind the wheel on her own. But it was my mother's vehicle that she left when she got into some trouble. But if you look, if you guys could look in her, which I don't know if you will or whatever, but if you could look in her, I wish I had the paperwork with me. I tried to get my mom to come up here with her paperwork. But she's incarcerated for two DUIs, and she don't believe, she don't belong in there, you know. And, and so I know there's a lot of people incarcerated, like that's mental, that don't belong in jail. They need to have, be in a mental hospital.
Unfortunately, society has let those folks down by not having sufficient medical, mental hospitals available for folks. But unfortunately, once again, that's not really within our jurisdiction here. Was she arrested in the county or in the city?
At the county.
Yeah, we don't even have jurisdiction over that. I think your best bet would be to, oh, what do you think? Talk to the district attorney's office and bring the issue of the mental situation to their attention.
Sure. Because I didn't, like, if, when I call down there.
Well, then why don't you use Mr. Cohen, the deputy public defender? Why don't you call him, go to, if he, if it's hard to get to him, go to his office and sit there until somebody talks to you and tell him the situation, and hopefully it will help your sister.
What's his name, sir?
Philip Cohen, K-O-H-N.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you so much, sir.
Yes.
And she can send, tell them that you sent her, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, she, she might have had a deputy public defender. Maybe she could try back or contact.
I'm sure if she goes over there, they'll be able to check it out. If they're already representing the sister, just bring it to her attention. If she has a mental problem, then that should be addressed. Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else, please?
Hello, I'm Rasan Joshua Collins, and I'm minister out here locally in Las Vegas. And I, recently this morning, I saw someone get arrested, a homeless person, and they were Liberty Park. And I think that the charge was probably trespassing for being in the park and held out to jail. But, you know, I, I just hope that, you know, maybe, I guess his name was Roy. I don't know his full name and everything. But I'm hoping that, you know, maybe you could have talked to the judges and the police a little bit, and the marshals, just, you know, law, homeless people don't have nowhere else to go. If they're in a park, I mean, that way they're not under a bridge or something like that. I mean, just treat people like you would want to be treated. I don't think it should be outlawed to be in a park, you know, when the hours are, as long as the people aren't drinking and getting drunk or doing drugs or anything like that. If they just have nowhere else to go, I, I think it should be allowed, you know, like you let a variance to, you know, someone, you know, put a strip club next to a school or that kind of thing. There should be some kind of variance for homeless people, you know, because that's, that's a real need, you know. You don't have to have another strip club or another bar or someone selling more booze. But we need, you know, just basic needs met for people that are poverty-stricken. So I don't know, I just, I just hope maybe you could do some kind of variance-type thing for the homeless, just like you do for these businesses that oftentimes are immoral. But also, under Nevada statute chapter 202.060, it states, "The purpose of the statute is to prohibit minors from loitering on premises where alcohol beverages are sold. It is to protect the morals and health of minors by keeping them away from premises where they might come into contact with undesirable persons and be subjected to the urge to purchase intoxicating liquors at an age when such beverages would be detrimental to their health." Now, on Fremont Street where I preach a lot, I mean, the environment includes Carl Safe Sax Ferris, right? And his name is Lolly Proclaimed there, out there underneath the Fremont Experience. We have half-naked women prancing around, catching the eyes of many children from the toddler age on up. We have a strip club with outdoor video of women taking off her tops, smiling seductively. You know, there's a yearly homosexual parade. We have stabbings and shootings out here, drunkards, drug dealers, gamblers, thieves. I saw a little child, I believe it was last night, had a little shirt that said, "I love gaming" on it. I mean, we're obviously promoting this to the children, right? And the child's wearing this shirt. Would a child be good to have a shirt that says, "I love smoking," or "I love prostitutes," or "I love drugs," right? And there's closer smoke, all that there. Also, you know, gyrating female dancers with very little clothing. And all these children rushing through Fremont Street. So this, this is obviously promoting evil to the youth and not protecting their morals, which you have a duty to do under state law. So, you know, I don't, I ask that you act in this situation. A lot of parents, there's something, went to the county commission meeting yesterday complaining about the same type of thing. And it just, it grieves me that nothing's really being done to protect these children. So, you know, I know there's a lot of parents out there that, that agree with me, but they can't be here today. But I, I'm here to speak for them, you know, as well as others that, that believe in morality. And I just ask that you do something to protect the children.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Teresa Towns, and I'm American Legion, VFW, Elk member, I'm all of it. I came in today to ask the council. On the 23rd of April, I compiled in with knowing a lot of people, a community awareness event at the Elk's Lodge on Orange. And the reason why I've done this is because a lot of people are unaware of their rights, their things that they should know. It's, for some reason, it's not being fed into the community of where they need to go, what they need, and all of that. So as in finding out the information that I needed in order to assist these people, I mean, it's like I've got some of everybody to kind of like participate. And I come to ask the councilmen, and particularly this Barlow's district, to come out on the 23rd and let the people know, what do the councilmen do? What are the purpose? What do you handle? What can you provide for them? What direction they go? Because they need to know this. I mean, you probably would have more voters if they knew where to get the assets that they need. And if people don't have, lack of knowledge, you know, is the contributor to a lot of the handicap for Nevada. I'm a native, and I've seen the town grow from where it was to where it's at now. And I think, and all it did was create a diversity that crime is all over the city. But if we gave the people what they needed and the way they wanted it, and the things that they need and the tools, then we wouldn't have all this problem. We need to kind of like work with the mothers that don't have the efficiencies of education and all that other kind of stuff. It's a lot. So we would need the council to come in and kind of like help assist in explaining information to the people in order that they know. And I mean, it's just not compiled to West Las Vegas. It's going to be people from everywhere. So then we, we need as many of you all to come in and tell them what's available in your district to the community. And that's on the 23rd, and I do have flyers that I'm going to leave for you all to have. So it would be greatly appreciated, because if you get the right people, you know, then you could change. You can't change everybody. We ain't going to reach everybody. But the ones that we can reach, it would be a great assistance to the community and everybody if we reach those that we can. So I'm going to leave the flyers, and where would I direct them to?
Right to this young lady here, and then she'll pass it out to.
And it would be great if any of you guys could participate.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Every once in a while, I give you folks a bunch of articles out of a bunch of lefty magazines. But believe it or not, I'm a capitalist. But this jobless recovery really sucks, and we are hurting in our neighborhood. The only way to correct this is to go after the banks. And this is what we need to insist upon on our congressional liaison. I don't remember what her name was. But right now, if you ask 100 people on the street, does the Federal Reserve, is it part of the, of the US government? And they will say, yes, it is not. It's a private corporation of twelve banks. Bernanke is under a mandate of Congress to create jobs and stabilize the currency. But he is only responsible, as his chairman, he's only responsible for his corporation, which are the banks. And he has stated time and time again that his sole responsibility is to make the banks whole. Well, the Federal Reserve is creating money out of thin air and, and buying treasury bills with it at 4.5% so they don't have to loan the money. And we need to get our liaison to get on these, to Congress, to say, look, you got a mandate, use it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, folks, anybody else? By the way, the woman's name is Vicki Cram.
I'll have to read my little thing.
No problem. Just tell us your name first, though.
My name is Augusta Gary.
Thank you.
And I spoke with my.
If I just may interrupt you just real quick, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Did you pick up your wallet from upstairs?
Oh, yes, you don't look.
Okay.
I thought I was at the test site, right up the little polygraph. You're also honey stupid.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you picked it up. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
That was great. I felt good. Okay, I've already spoken to my councilman, and he said I'm not out of order, so I'd like to read this. I got quite a few signatures, and I'm going to say this first. A lot of them I couldn't get because Mayor Goodman is not running anymore. And the people kind of feel, they said, well, there's nothing going to be done now since Mayor Goodman is gone. I said, well, we got to try it in new people, whosoever they are, to come in. So I'll read this. Okay, "All taxpayers fund public street medium in the Las, Las Vegas Valley should be equal in aesthetics. There are large number of street mediums in the West Las Vegas community that needed to receive attention by the way of beautification from the elected officials representing District D, Ward 5. The medium located on Vegas Drive near Orange between Martin Luther King Boulevard and Simmons and the large circular medium on F, Harrison, and Orange Street are an ISO in the West Las Vegas community. The limited or non-existent plant life in the medium makes the difference of the West Side Las Vegas community look barren." I can't say this, but "the gargantuan boulders placed in the medium location on Vegas Drive near Orange and not-so-large rocks placed in the circular medium located on F, Harrison, and Orange Street are not aesthetically pleasing to the sight and present and present a potential danger to motorists. The West Las Vegas community deserves similar, beautiful, aesthetically pleasing street mediums as those located throughout Summer and Green Valley community." Now, I like, I have quite a few names, but like I said, a lot of people, I don't know. They know Mayor Goodman couldn't run forever. He's not king. But anyway, they just feel like, see, I've been here a long time. My husband's people came in '43. I've been here almost 60 years. And I mean, we've seen some areas should have been run out of town on a rail. They never did anything for the West Side. You just come over and give us a barbecue. We used to that. We don't need that. But anyway, I got quite a few signatures.
Why don't you give those to our clerk, so we'll make that part of the record, please?
And a lot of, all right, I will. But it's one thing I would like to say. A lot of people, like I said, wouldn't sign because they feel it, they didn't become apathetic. But it reminds me, when I was in college, I didn't finish college, but I took quite a few courses. And I'm pretty sure this might have been in Human Growth and Development, and it had something to do with child psychology. And they went to the disenfranchised areas and schools, and they had the children to draw people. And the children in the low, you know, disenfranchised environment, they drew children with stick arms, legs, and three fingers. You went to the well-to-do part of the city, of the community, they drew fat people. Now, we're sitting over there at those rocks, still in what I went to school 40 or 50 years ago, and at least 40 years ago, we didn't got past stick people. And we know, well, that water supply may be a problem. But I looked at, on West Charleston, and I saw these milk cactuses or Joshua trees or something. And they look good. They don't take water.
I know. We're, we're doing that along Martin Luther King.
I live right there.
Yeah, we're starting, we're starting to make that contribution.
But think about, you know how long those rocks has been there.
No, we don't.
You may not have been there. You may not have been to F, Orange, and Madison. I think when I come here, you had wells, you know, and I think it still may be a well somewhere there on Harrison. But we do want something that looks pretty good. And I'm, I'm this type of person. I don't believe in just keep talking about people, beating the dead horse if you don't make something known.
I agree.
You know what I mean? You tell them, and then, don't vote, go around encourage young people. Don't vote for this person. That's what we old people do. You know, we, I don't have the one vote, but I influence a lot of people.
Sure you do.
So, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Did you hand the, ma'am, did you hand that up?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. I know he can't do it by himself.
Right.
It takes a whole bunch of people to help Councilman Barlow.
Thank you. Okay.
You hear that? I need all the help I can get.
Somebody said that down here. Okay, anybody else? All right, then we'll go on to item 99. Any member of the council wish to speak to any item? Yes, all right, we'll start with Councilman Anthony and work our way down.
Thank you, Mayor. If you own a business in Ward 4, I'd like to invite you to our next Ward 4 Business Network meeting. Our guest speaker is going to be Jeremy Aguirre from Applied Analysis. He's an excellent speaker and can provide a lot of current information, economic information on the state of Nevada and the city of Las Vegas to help businesses plan for the future. The, the meeting will be held April 14th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Drango Hills YMCA located at Gowon and Drango, on Drango, on Drango between Gowon and Cheyenne. So it should be a great meeting. If you live in Ward 4, please come out. Again, it's Jeremy Aguirre, Applied Analysis, April 14th from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Drango Hills YMCA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. It is that time of year again. It is our annual spring celebration at Floydland Park at Tulley Springs, April 9th on a Saturday, this upcoming Saturday. It's at noon to 4:00 p.m. We're going to have face painters, jump houses, amusement rides, crafts, games, the farmer's market out there, some community vendors, music, and much, much more. Also, earlier this morning, we talked about this, the Las Vegas Celtic Society would be putting on their seventh annual Highland, Highland Games, April 16th and 17th, also out at Floydland Tulley Springs. This is going to be a great event, probably the largest in the past seven years. Lots of entertainment, heavy athletics, vendors, lots of great food, and lots of great fun, and I think scotch, Mayor.
We're not going there.
Councilman Anthony's going to be there.
I know, for scotch he will. Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, nope. Councilperson?
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Couple things. First, I would like to give a hearty congratulation to my colleagues, Councilman Barlow and Councilwoman Tarkanian for your resounding victories yesterday. Congratulations to both of you. Secondly, it's that time again when Nevada Childseekers has provided me with information about another missing child in our valley. Her picture is on the screen. I do this every meeting because I believe the more people we have out in the community looking for these missing young kids, the better chance we have of returning them safely to their family. To date, over half of the children, which we have profiled through the city council meetings, have been located. Today's child is a runaway. Erica Cortez goes by the nickname Kiki. She is 14 years old and has been missing since January 24th of this year. She is a Hispanic girl, five feet, four inches tall, and weighs 115 pounds, brown eyes and brown hair. She has a scar on her left arm. Kiki was last seen near North Rainbow and Flanagan Drive. She often frequents the Pine Wood Apartments on Stewart, near the area of Palace Verdes and Sierra Vista. She may be with her boyfriend Sergio. If you know where Erica is, please contact Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009, or Las Vegas Metro Missing Persons Unit at 702-828-3111. Information about Erica and other missing children can be located on the Nevada Childseekers website at www.nevadachildseekers.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman? Councilwoman, anything?
Yes, first, I wanted to thank everybody through all our wards that helped recently on the, the city cleanup that we had. We've had people out there doing the curbs, doing the fire hydrants, pulling weeds off of people's property with their permission, of course. And it was in every ward that I was able to go to Ward 3 and 5 and 2. And we had, it was just wonderful seeing the citizens committed to working together, empowering themselves so that they can help make our city move to a higher level. So I wanted to thank everybody in that. And then I wanted to add that Friday, April 29th, is a Valley-wide event called DJs for PJs. And I will be leading a City Hall-wide event to collect children through adult-sized pajamas for abused and neglected children and teens in Southern Nevada. And so if anybody's interested in helping or giving you a little lead-in of two, three weeks, and I hope that you'll help out all you can, and just call our office at 229-2299 if you need information, or you can use the computer, djsforpjs.org, which says DJs for PJs. Okay.
Okay. Councilor Barlow?
I like that. Councilman Wilson, thank you so very much for the congratulations. Also, I would like to congratulate my colleague, Lois, for an outstanding job out on the election, the reelection trail. Tomorrow, we'll be coffee with the councilman from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Rancho and Bonanza at the Starbucks. So please come out and enjoy a conversation with me and my staff as we talk about any issues that the residents or business owners throughout Ward 5, or throughout the city of Las Vegas for that matter, would like to have with me. So please come out tomorrow with coffee, for coffee with the councilman, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., Rancho and Bonanza Starbucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is that everybody's business? Thank you very much.